Good evening. Whoa. And welcome to the deliberative session for the town of Newport. A few housekeeping items before we begin. If you are not a registered voter in the town of Newport, please sit in the back. The exceptions to that are those who are town employees who may sit in the front if they are needed to be called on to explain any of the articles we'll be discussing. But if you are not a registered voter, please sit in the back. Please turn off your cell phones or silence them. There is no prohibition for taking pictures if you want to of this meeting. It is a public meeting, but I don't want to hear your dulcet ringtones as we are debating these articles. The exits are here, here where you came in. The public restroom is in the hall heading towards the center of the school. And at that note, we will begin. All of the voters should have an orange card or blue card. They're giving out different colors, but a card that says Newport Voter Card. For those of you that this is the first time, this is how we vote. We raise our cards when we are for or against what we are discussing. And for the purpose of this meeting, I will call on Robert Scott to count this side of the room, and I will call on PJ Lovely to count this side of the room. And without further ado, I would ask you to rise for the pledge of allegiance, and I would ask Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to lead us.
I'd like to read just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with experience, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that you take a moment of silence to collect your breath, to think about what we do here because we are a free country. And I would ask that you remember the people of the Ukraine for the healing of our country, for those who have lost everything due to tornadoes and storms this year, in memory of our Newport citizens who died since our last town meeting, for those who die every day from gun violence and addiction, for an end to racial unrest against Asians, Blacks, Indigenous, and other persons of color. I do not have a list of the town employees that I was going to introduce to you, so I would ask Jeff to do that, to introduce the town employees who are here at this meeting.
All right. We have our town manager.
Oh, you can need to turn the, you've got to turn it on. I'll show you how.
I got it. Is that better?
I'll just speak loud.
All right. Hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. We have our town manager, Hunter Reisberg, here. We have our Public Works Director, Todd Carterier, our Police Chief, Alex Lee, our Fire Chief, Steve Yenuzy. We have our Finance Director, who, if no one knows, it's Paul Brown over here in the corner, new guy. We have our Recreational Director, PJ Lovely. We have our Planning and Zoning Director, Christina Donovan there, our Economic Development Coordinator, Allison Browning, and who am I missing? Ah, I'm sorry, our librarian, and I can't, Justine?
Bafar.
Bafar, thank you. All right. And anyone else? Anyone looking for work at the town? We're hiring. Okay, thank you.
At the last meeting, I reminded you all to apply for red house signs. If you haven't yet, I would encourage you to do that. They are free. The fire department will bring them to you and help you install them. They are a life safety issue. The next session of the town meeting is the voting session, and that will be on May 9th, right here in the Newport Middle High School gym, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And that is just the voting session. So I will read to you the First Amendment. "Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the peoples peaceably to assemble, and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." Everyone may speak who is a registered voter. We will recognize non-voters who are town employees, and we will recognize the consultants who have come to help us walk through a couple of the articles around the wastewater treatment plant and the well. But everyone will speak. To speak, you must be recognized by me, and then you will have the opportunity to opine on the article on the floor. After everyone has spoken on the article, we'll go around again if there's people who want to speak again on the article. But we're going to give everybody the opportunity to speak at least once on the article. And if we have to go around a third time, we will, or a fourth time, whatever. But everybody gets to have one dip at the well, and then we'll go back. Warrant articles can be amended, but only if the amendment is germane to the main article, which means it has to be about the article. As an example, there could be a budget article, and you might want to amend the number. That's germane. But you can't then put into that article, "And we're going to buy five buildings downtown." It has to be germane, which means relevant to the article. Reconsideration. After the article is discussed, and if there are not any other amendments, we will move to the next article, as there is no voting at this session. If there are amendments, they will be voted on in the order in which they are presented. This only allows for the article to then be put on the warrant as finally amended by this body. Sometimes some articles have two or three amendments. We'll take them in order, and then that will be the way it is put on the town warrant for Election Day. Every article will be read by the Board members or by the petitioners if there are petitioned articles. The first four articles in your warrant, I assume that you all, which I should not assume, have this. This is the warrant, the proposed warrant. If you don't have one, the supervisors of the checklist have them in the back. The first four articles are not articles that we will discuss because they are done by Australian ballot on Election Day. There are two three-year seats for selectmen. There are five candidates running for two three-year seats. There are two incumbents, Herb Teller, Barry Connell, and the other three candidates in random order are Doug Ring, Jeff North, and Bert Spalding. There is one town clerk to be elected, and there is one candidate, the incumbent Lee DuFort. There is one treasurer to be elected, and there is one candidate, the incumbent Lisa Morse. There is one trustee of the trust funds, and the candidate is William Wilmot. So I will ask for someone to move Article 5.
All right. I move Article 5 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $23,500,000 to pay for the design, construction, and equipping of an upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant, $13,450,000 to come from federal and state grants, $51,000 to come from the sewer fund surplus, and the balance of $9,999,000 to come from the issuance of bonds or notes under and in compliance with the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue and negotiate said bonds or notes and determine the rate of interest in the time period thereon, and to take other action, other such action as may be necessary to effect the issue, negotiation, sale, and delivery of such bonds or notes as shall be in the best interest of the town, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend such monies as become available from the federal and/or state governments for use in conjunction with said project and pass any votes thereto. This is a non-lapsing article per RSA 32:7, Roman numeral 3, and will not lapse until the project is completed or by June 30, 2028, whichever is sooner in accordance with RSA A three-fifths majority vote is required. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Note, there is no tax impact from this article. Repayment of this debt expected to come from the sewer fund.
Is there a second? Do you wish to speak to the article?
I'd like to introduce our engineer from Wright Pierce to do a presentation, if I may.
Right. Mr. Michael Curry is the engineer from Wright Pierce, who is a non-resident but who will speak to the issue as the engineer.
While he's setting up, I want to let people know that he's been here before for a presentation in the Opera House back in February. His presentation is available on NCTV and through the town website, along with the PowerPoint from that presentation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone showing up tonight and hearing some of the discussion about the wastewater treatment facility. So the town of Newport owns and operates and maintains a wastewater treatment facility. It's actually right across the street from here. That facility treats up to 1.3 million gallons a day of residential, commercial, and industrial wastewater collected throughout the town. The treated wastewater is then discharged to the Sugar River, a tributary of the Connecticut River. The original wastewater treatment facility was constructed in 1971 as a primary treatment facility only. It underwent upgrades in 1988 to add the lagoon system, an additional secondary treatment, including grit removal and disinfection system. Since that time, the town has conducted various upgrades throughout the years to improve and maintain reliable treatment, including things such as a UV disinfection upgrade as well as effluent pump station upgrades. In 2020, the town was issued a new discharge permit for the wastewater treatment facility with more stringent effluent requirements for various parameters, including total nitrogen, ammonia, phosphorus, and other criteria, including metals. Based on engineering evaluations, the town's existing wastewater treatment facility was deemed to not have the capability to reliably meet the town's new effluent discharge limits required by the EPA. As such, over the past two and a half years, the town has been in violation of both their total phosphorus permit and ammonia-nitrogen discharge permit to the Sugar River. In response to these violations, the EPA issued the town with an administrative order which mandates that the town work towards a solution to solve these violations and to help bring the wastewater treatment facility into compliance with the permit and its goals, including the protection of human and environmental health. In order to comply with this wastewater treatment facility permit, the town has been actively working with Wright Pierce and regulatory agencies, including the EPA and NHDES, towards a long-term solution to satisfy the wastewater treatment facility's current permit requirements as well as future requirements. The preliminary phase of the new wastewater treatment facility was completed in January of 2023, with the design phase of the project anticipated to be completed by the end of 2023. The proposed wastewater treatment facility includes major system upgrades, including a new biological treatment system and a new effluent filtration process, along with upgrades to an aging disinfection system and a new solids handling and grit facility to accompany those systems. These systems will provide the town with the town's wastewater treatment facility in order to, again, meet not only current permit requirements but also forecasting into future requirements, which may be required in the future, including total nitrogen. The estimated cost for this total project is estimated at $28 million, including engineering services and construction. That $28 million is a total project cost. The town's administration has worked very aggressively to pursue different funding avenues to try to maximize the amount of grant funding and subsidies that would be included as part of this project. And with some of the current infrastructure funds that are in place, they've been able to secure a very favorable combination of grants and low-interest loans across four different funding agencies leveraged across one another for the proposed wastewater treatment facility upgrade. So out of this current funding package of $28 million, it includes subsidies of over 50% of the project, meaning that $14.8 million out of the 28 would be grant. The remaining $13.2 million would consist of a long-term, low-interest loan, which would be paid for through sewer use fees. The magnitude of this sort of grant and subsidy package is not common, and it will likely not be available in the future years if the project's deferred. A common question that's asked is, what are the implications if the town does not move forward with this wastewater treatment facility upgrade right now? So as I mentioned, the town is currently in violation with the wastewater discharge permit and has been over the last two and a half years. The EPA and the state regulators have played nice up to this point, but there is the option for the EPA to leverage fines against the community for inaction of anywhere between $2,500 up to $25,000 per day for violating their permit. Regulators can also enact administrative restrictions for the town, which would restrict new sewer connection permits, any additional commercial or industrial discharges to the wastewater treatment facility. The purpose of this, from the EPA and the state's side, is to essentially cause some economic impact to the town in order to try to force the town's hand to make action. If the project is delayed, it's likely that the total cost for the project would also escalate, just in terms of general inflation that we see across construction markets. And perhaps the biggest impact, the funding package that's currently in place right now, which is, again, over a 50% grant and subsidy package, is not going to be guaranteed for following years. So that would likely be lost, and the town would have to pursue a new package, which, based on what future forecasts look like, may not be nearly as favorable. That concludes my comments at this time. I guess at this point, we'd like to open it up to questions.
Does anyone wish to speak to this article? State your name and come to the microphone, please, and your address.
Darrell Jones, 83 Laurel Street. And I see how you're saying that there's going to be no impact on taxes from this, but what is it going to do for our water use costs? Our water use costs keep going up and up and up, and we feel like we get less and less and less for every increase. That's my question.
That is a serious concern and one that I've had, as I've been, I guess, observing how the town, Wright Pierce, and the state and the feds have been working to put this together. The cost of this has been spiraling up. We're right now looking at a $28 million cost. The estimates that are in the PowerPoint that were presented in February, there's a slide there called "How Will This Impact Sewer User Fees?", and these are just ballpark. Everyone, everyone is going to be different. Taking an existing sewer user estimating about 4,000 gallons per month, the average sewer bill is about $52 a month in this scenario, about $617 a year. We're looking at an increase of 30%, well, in 2023 here, so shortly, which increased the monthly sewer bill to $67, and the annual one to about $802. Then in 2024, 2025, and 2026, the proposal, at least in the PowerPoint, it's something that the Board of Selectmen would have to vote to increase these rates, would have them going up 25% each, each year. So by 2026, the monthly sewer bill would go from $52 to about $131, which, you know, is, it is a lot, but also about the same time I was seeing this, I had a chance to talk with someone who just had to replace their septic system. After 2025 years, septic system has to be replaced, from what I'm hearing or have heard. The newer ones that are available, they need to be replaced more often. So the impact to the sewer users will increase probably, you know, say 125% or so over the course of the next four years. However, if you talk to people who are on a septic system with what it would cost to put it in and replace it after 2025 years, and the cost of pumping it out, how often they do, it may be not that much different than what people on septic systems have to do with their systems. It is a lot of money. I've been, I've expressed my concerns to some of the federal people funding this, that, you know, they're like, you know, you're asking a lot from a small community. But this is where we are, and the cost is something that if we don't go with it this year, the best possible case is we'll end up having to do it in a year or two. And just inflation is going to drive up the cost of the project. And the interest rate we are being offered by the federal government right now is 1.5%. It's probably a couple of years ago, 1.5%, that's pretty good, but in today's market, 1.5% is nothing that they're guaranteeing beyond this, this offer today, or this year. So I don't know.
Does anyone else who wishes to address this article come to the front, state your name and address? No, you may not.
My name is Robert Collins. I live at 130 Cheney Street. So when this young man was giving us a presentation, he said that the sewer treatment plant was owned and maintained by the town of Newport. So I want to know why the Board of Selectmen did not have the courage and the guts to put this on the tax rate instead of bankrupting all of the sewer users and driving all of the old people out of town? And I would like to hear from each one of you, selectmen, as to why you think that this is not a town sewer treatment plant? And when the people have their septic tanks pumped, where does that effluent go? I believe it goes to our Newport sewer treatment plant. So I would like to hear from each one of you why you don't think it's important that this is a town sewer treatment plant and a town project and not bankrupt the sewer users? I'm listening, and I hear nothing.
Excuse me. Mr. Collins, the board has the option to respond to you or not.
I will respond. This is a discussion we have had a couple times. The, in order for the town taxpayers to pick up some of the tab for this, we will need a, pretty much a town meeting vote by all the taxpayers to put it back on the taxpayers.
But, excuse me, doesn't the whole town get to vote on indebted to sewer users?
Yes.
And is it not true that there is a separate water and sewer commission, of which the town selectmen are members of but yet never meet?
We meet as part of our meeting for the Board of Selectmen. Let me address one reason why the entire town votes on it is because, and I don't know the exact laws, but if the Sewers Department or Sewer Commission or whatever fails completely and we're not taking in revenue to pay off this bond, pretty much the entire town then is basically, like, they co-sign the note. It would fall back on the town. And that's one reason why the entire town has to vote for it, because basically the entire town is sort of like backing up the sewer users in this case.
But you're going to bankrupt the users.
Mr. Collins, is there any other member of the board that wishes to address Mr. Collins's issue?
Keith Sayer. I live at 70 Meadow Road. I'm on the Board of Selectmen. I understand your concerns. It's a concern of mine because I'm on the same system. But I've previously owned a house in Newport where I had my own water and sewer. And whenever I've had it pumped out, it does go to the system, but I pay several hundred dollars every time I have to do that. So it makes me a user of the system, but I'm paying for it as I need it. I, if I wasn't on the system personally, I wouldn't want to be getting stuck with a bill for it. As a user, it looks like my annual cost is going to go up, at least from the numbers that I've heard. I don't quote me because I don't know the exact numbers, but it looks like it's $300 or $400 a year.
The first year?
Every year. It's going to be that, much more every year.
And how are the elderly people that are already struggling to pay high heating costs and high property taxes?
I'm already there, you know, but also, when it's time for me to get a new car, you know, I don't go without because I can't afford it. You know, I don't have any trouble buying a new car at $500 a month.
Mr. Collins, this is not a debate. You asked for an answer.
And so I encourage everybody to vote for it because I'm going to.
Is there any other member of the board that wishes to address Mr. Collins?
Barry Connell, 178 Springfield Road. Water and sewer, high supply to myself and my house. I understand what you're saying, and it presents a conundrum, a conundrum for me in terms of, people can only stand so much. I understand that. But I just had to replace part of my water system, and it was not inexpensive to do that. So, you know, I do incur costs, too. It's something that I think continues to need discussion. If you want to hook me up to the town sewer and water, I'd be more than happy to have you do that. It's easier on me. I don't have to worry about, you know, bad summers when we don't have, worrying about the wells, things of that nature. And that part, you know, that's part of the issue, too. So that's my answer, Bob.
Is there anyone else? I see you.
Jim Burrows, 229 Skyline Drive, Newport. Obviously, I understand the issues and concerns of the costs for those people that have their own wells and septic. If they are unable to pay for their repairs, is the town going to pay for their repairs? No. It's a user fee-based. We get that. It is a hardship for a lot of people, same as if they have their own systems and have to pay to repair those.
And that's basically the same thing that I've been hearing for years and years. But most communities around, when there is such a large capital project that is a benefit for the whole town, regardless of whether you are directly connected to it or not, it goes on the tax rate and it is supported by all of the taxpayers. I see you.
Jim Burrows, 229 Skyline Drive, Newport. Obviously, I understand the issues and concerns of the costs for those people that have their own wells and septic. If they are unable to pay for their repairs, is the town going to pay for their repairs? No. It's a user fee-based. We get that. It is a hardship for a lot of people, same as if they have their own systems and have to pay to repair those.
And that's basically the same thing that I've been hearing for years and years, but most communities around, when there is such a large capital project that is a benefit for the whole town regardless of whether you were directly connected to it or not, it goes on the tax rate and it is supported by all of the taxpayers.
Mr. Beard? You're done. State your name and address. Man in the back with the red hat, I saw your card, you're next.
Tim Beard, 221 Springfield Road. What is the current capacity of the sewer treatment plant?
It's a 1.3 annual average day treatment facility.
Okay. And has that changed over the last few years or has it just been, has that been what it's been right along?
The design capacity remains the same. It's just based on what the influent loading in, that's what it was originally designed for. However, I would note that it's, again, you're in violation right now, so.
Yeah. I just, so I just have a form from the Department of Environmental Services in New Hampshire that says that our capacity is 0.7 million gallons a day from 2020. So that's the reason I ask that, because it seems like you say that it's double the capacity, this date says it's only 0.7%, which is a huge difference. If the current system is 0.7% and we're putting in 1.3, it seems like we're doubling the cost of it, doubling the size of it. So I'm just looking for clarification on that.
Yeah, it's a fantastic question. So currently, your NPT's permit, your discharge permit actually says in it that the treatment facility is designed for 1.3 million gallons per day. You don't necessarily receive that much from the town's perspective. That's probably where that 0.7 MGD roughly number comes from. So currently, the town sends roughly 50% of that 1.3 MGD to the treatment facility. In order to not incur additional costs, we've designed the new treatment facility to have a 0.7 MGD capacity with a little bit of buffer space so that you could incorporate growth into the next 20-year future, but not supply tanks that are overly large, which is just additional construction costs, additional engineering costs. So we have right-sized this treatment facility. We actually maintained your existing lagoon system so that if you did get flows that were higher, it would actually flow around the treatment plant to those lagoons and then be pumped back to the beginning of the treatment facility. And the way that we work it with EPA is so that you don't actually have to give up your treatment capacity. That's something that many communities have a hard time fighting to hold on to, so that if you did need that in the future, you would be able to use that.
Gentlemen in the back, come to the front, state your name and address.
Jeffrey L. Zabriski, 92 South Main Street, Newport, New Hampshire. You can tell by my accent, I'm not really a New Englander. I'd like you to repeat those numbers again for us slower people. How much was it going to cost based upon that average usage?
Based upon 4,000 gallons, assuming monthly cost, in 2022, $52 a month, it would be going up to about $131 by 2026.
Good enough. Understood. 4,000 gallons.
Speak to the mic, sir.
How many are in the household?
I don't know what that is.
Hmm. Now, if you took a shower every morning and spouse did, so you got two kids, I can promise you it's more than 4,000 gallons. So we're talking maybe two-person household, it's going to be roughly 4,000? You're the expert.
So this number was based on, I believe the EPA number is roughly 2.4 people per household and an assumed per capita, per day use, including things like showers, laundry, all the other components that make up it.
Hmm. 2.4 people per house? And I see the increase. Suppose you have more than 2.4 people per house? I'm not sure how many of you do, but I can tell you in our household, there's more than 2.4 people. So let me ask you this. What if I wanted to drill a well? Can I do that in Newport? Select Board would go with that. If I wanted to drill a well and try and reduce the amount that the town has to pay for my larger burden, that would be no problem.
What you cannot hear is Mr. Brown's response to that question, so I would ask him to come to the podium.
So the answer was, I believe that you can. You need to meet planning and zoning setbacks from side butters and things, but we do have private wells in the water district.
Thank you.
Throw the question?
That was a good question. The reason I ask is, you know, getting real expensive to feed the family nowadays. Got a garden. Costs a lot of money to water the garden if it ain't raining. Now, I can pay the city to come in and put another water meter in and run that separate from the septic, which I totally understand, but then I got to pay a fee for that every month, correct? Correct. Okay. So the only reason I'm asking is, that's great if you have 2.4 people. That's two adults and a half a child, roughly. Uh, well, it depends who you're married to. But I just wanted to clarify that because I didn't quite understand. You gave me the numbers, which is good, and I understand that. And I understand the position of the town. And I understand the battles that should have been fought a long time ago were not fought and should have been. And I'm hoping none of you gentlemen were here. And I'm new. I'm learning about it. I've learned a lot. This was not a fight I had this dog in. But I was just curious about, to the residents who live here and have to pay that, because I can tell you my water bill is a whole lot more than that. And it's going to go up that much more for the next four years, as I understand. Now, at the rate of inflation, I'm sorry, I can squeak it out, but I know half this town probably can't. So I'm just asking you, what are the other options to look at later, not at this meeting? How can we develop something different? Who can we partner with? Who can we, you know, discuss? And as much as I have been in the federal government, the EPA is not your friend. If they say they're here to help, they're not. So I understand where you're coming from. That's the only question I had, and I appreciate the honesty and favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me comment on a few things. The 4,000 gallons was just used to provide a scale, you know, so if it's 8,000 gallons you use, it would be double the amount per month in theory. And looking at the history of this, probably a decade or so ago, the Board of Selectmen at that time actually did do a renovation of the wastewater treatment plant to meet the requirement from the EPA as we had it at that time. Back a decade or so ago, it was a $3 million project. Town hired an engineering firm that was blessed by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. You know, we built that building out there, which is going to be repurposed under this new renovation. Thought it was all good. It was a new technology. The engineering firm is the second largest in the world as far as working with water and wastewater. As I said, it was a $3 million project. We went, turned it on, and it didn't work. Complete failure. The town ended up suing that engineering firm, and it took probably a good year or so and cost us probably close to $1 million in legal fees, but we got the $3 million back. And then the state of New Hampshire said, remember that $3 million we fronted you? You can give it back to us now. So pretty much, we paid a million bucks in legal fees for the state to get their money back. But meanwhile, time goes on. The EPA has revised their requirements, and we have been working with Wright Pierce for a while and looking at meeting the new requirements. And quite honestly, in the past year or so, the cost of this has gone up. It seemed almost every time I asked how the progress was. I can tell you that we have been seriously looking at getting as much federal and state support as we can on this. The gentleman at USDA Rural Development, who's basically saying how great it is, we got $6 million bucks, you know, we had to really push him, followed by the name of Eric Law. And I was on one Zoom call with him where he said, oh, you guys will just pay for it. And I was telling him, not as blight as this, that he didn't know what he was talking about. And apparently, you know, because the Public Works Director and the town manager have been talking with these people, it's like you just, you know, the employees, but supposedly on the selectman, I represent the people, and I tell them, you know, we're not going to pay for this. They came forward with some more money. I don't, I wish we had more money coming in at this. They make a big deal about how much money we got, and from what I understand, we, for a community our size, we've squeezed them pretty good. But I wish it was better. But this is what we have on the table today. You know, it's, it's not pretty. The design that Wright Pierce has come up with is, I'd say, not quite old school, but it's a proven system. As the EPA starts throwing new requirements at us in the future, it can be adapted to meet those new requirements. And, you know, the interest rate, as I said, at 1.5% is probably something that we would not see again. It's, I'd say this is the best, worst offer we have, you know, to go forward with this, so.
Todd Fratzl. State your name and address.
Todd Fratzl, 20 River View Road. Mr. Collins, I want to put in perspective your plea to have every taxpayer pay for your sewer upgrade. You talk about the elderly being taxed out of this thing. What do you say to Mrs. Jones, who's 85 years old, who's on a septic system? You have her start paying in her taxes to upgrade that sewer system, and her system fails. $25,000 later, amortized over 15 years. She won't live that long, but she's looking at $2,500 a year plus disposal, plus your tax to help pay for your upgrade. It makes zero sense. It's a ridiculous argument to even consider having people that have a sewer system, their own sewer system, pay for this thing. You know, I'm on town water. Do I like the increases? Nope. I have a septic system. Paid $20,000 for it, you know? I pay Sterns to dump over here, and I pay a fee for that. That fee's going to go up when this thing happens. So it sucks. You can't win this argument with the EPA. You know, people are saying, well, we just won't do it. Sure, you can take your gamble with the fines. Guess what's going to happen? Judge is going to come in, going to rule, going to force the construction of it, and then the state's going to turn around and adjust the tax to collect it. Meantime, you're spending money on lawyers. There's no way out of this. We are extremely fortunate that the money that's been put on the table right now, if you don't vote for this, it's absolute suicide with that sewer treatment plant.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for the first time? Mr. Spalding. State your name and address.
Bert Spalding, Sr. I'm not on water or sewer. I have a septic system, and I'm taking exception to Mr. Kessler's numbers that he used. We moved into the house in 1976, and we're still on the same septic system. That's 46 years. You have to pump it out. You have to take care of it. So if the numbers being used are from people who are not taking care of their system, then they make sense. But I believe the majority of us are taking care of our systems, and so therefore, the numbers are not applicable. But this is kind of like a robbery. The guy's got the gun to the back of your head, and he says, I want your wallet. Guess what? The answer's yes. This is no different for you guys that are, people that are on town water and sewer. If in fact, you are 100% sure that you are running what you are running on the town side at the best efficiency with the best people in the best way, and that's your challenge. But if you don't do this, the guy with the gun to the back of your head, that's the Department of Environmental Services. In probably another 20-some-odd years, I won't be here. But I will bet you money the DES puts a lot of municipalities and a lot of people in bankruptcy. We need to preserve what we have, but if we can't afford to have it, then we're just visitors.
Mr. North. State your name and address.
Jeff North, 25 Main Street. So I have a question, since we're talking about the life of septic systems, et cetera. What did you expect the lifetime of this improvement to be?
So a majority of the infrastructure, that's what I would call like a foundation, the structural components, the design life for those pieces, like tanks, it's over 50 years.
What about your upgrade?
Yes, that's correct. So the concrete tanks, which is a significant portion of the cost that they'll be installed, that has a lifespan of 50 years or more, as long as it's maintained, as long as it's cleaned and coated properly. The mechanical equipment typically, when we talk about mechanical equipment, we think about things like pumps, valves, items like that, that can range from anywhere from 15 years to 25 years, depending on the type of service that it's in. But the meat, I would say probably 30 to 50% of the cost of this wastewater treatment facility has a lifespan of 50 years or more.
So with that said, a couple of questions that I have, because I don't like when there's discussion of what it's going to cost the sewage users, and I understand this is not a water issue, this is a sewage issue. This is one side of the equation of what we pay for. That no numbers are presented for what is this increase? Where do the taxpayers pay for it? Like, do we know? Is that number presented anywhere here if we're to be picked up across? I'd just like to see the number. How big is it? How small is it? What's the impact? We're not really comparing anything here. We're just comparing a guess. Maybe someone knows what that would be. I don't know what that would be. So that's one thing. I understand the argument of some paying for it and some not. I also am concerned when you have major users like Ruger's. What's the impact? When do they leave town? Do we know? I also have a concern that when you amortize something over 15 years, the guy at year 16 has an incredible benefit. How about that? I lived in my home on septic and well for 10 years, and then I moved in town. If this had happened, when I lived in that home, I would have moved into Newport and picked up five years of that bill. How about the guy who moves in in 15 years? Picks up none of that bill. We bear the burden of this over a 15-year amortization schedule. It's really unfair. I think it really warrants a further look into this to be looked at as an overall tax question. We don't have enough information here currently to make a decision that makes sense. I'm not saying it wouldn't go one way or another, but I would like to be presented with the entire picture. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the Board who wishes to address Mr. North's question relative to the effect on the tax base?
You're asking what the tax impact would be if it was put on all users, right? That we don't have an answer to. And as I said before, in order to do that, we would have to come to a town meeting, much like this, and everyone, and I guess just a simple majority would need to vote in order to put the sewer cost onto all taxpayers and such. But it's something that I think has been discussed a few times in the past, and the feeling has been it's like fat chance of that. I will say, on the, on the water side, trying not to get too far ahead, probably decade, two decades ago, there used to be a hydrant fee on the general taxpayers.
I would ask you to refrain from this discussion until we discuss the waters.
I'm talking about taxation on the general fund in general.
Okay.
And this is an example, I can't remember what it was, but that was a case where there had been a small fee on the general taxpayers to support, in that case, water, it could apply to sewer. I don't know how it got on there, or how long it had been on there. But it was a conscious decision, I think, by a board of selectmen at one time to take it off in order to reduce the tax rate that year. And that was, I can't remember when. But that was the only time, you know, where the general taxpayers supported either water or sewer that I know of. And as you've heard from other people, if the sewer use is spread among all the taxpayers, you know, how does that impact, say, Mr. Spalding, that has his own septic system? Is he, is he being charged double? Just because he has a septic system, we're going to charge him part of the cost of my sewer? So.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for the first time? It is too late, Mr. North. Oh, Mr. Brown.
So previously, I have not looked at this, but on a quick estimation, it looks like it would probably be about $1.30 on the tax rate in the first year, a little bit more in the second year. But again, that was a quick estimation. One thing that I would say is, given what the USDA is giving us on this project, both the interest rate and the, and the $6 million, I think this is the year to pass this. If there's a discussion about putting it on the tax rate, that would be the year that we start repaying the bond, and we start paying for the additional operating expenses, which would be 2026. And then a Warren article at that point in time saying, we move half of that onto the tax rate, and then the voters can all vote on that. But we need to pass this this year, or we're going to, it's going to cost us a lot more in the future.
Anyone else for the first time? All right, for the second time, Mr. North.
So $1.30, say, Newport average valuation, I think, is right around $240,000, something like that. So we're looking at maybe $300 a year if we're doing it, you know, per thousand. You know, I don't know how many people in this town are on septic versus municipality. But I do know that it's a 50-year project. They were expected to pay for in just a few years. The impact is really, as Bob said, is almost bankrupt worthy for a lot of people. And I just think that this discussion isn't something that happens immediately here. It is, these, these things are too big. These things are too serious. And I know everyone says it has to happen this year, yet I also heard maybe it should happen the next two or three years. So I'm one for studying things. And I don't, I don't doubt that it's been studied at this level here. But I, I don't really feel like there isn't necessarily enough information presented to those of us who sit out here and who pay our taxes and our water and sewage in this town. And like I said, I've been on both sides of this. I've been a, a large water user, I'm currently a large water user, and I am also, I have been on the septic system. I don't know that I would have been overly upset by a $250 impact on my taxes versus a 120 for a, approximately 2.4 family increase per month. I think that's, that's pretty rough at, at $1,500 a month. So.
Mr. Nelson, for the first time. State your name and address.
Ben Nelson, 73 McDonough. I live a well and septic. But I benefit from Ruger being here. I benefit from Galenco being here. So even though I don't get water and sewer, I do benefit from having water sewer here. It will, we need more people in this town. High rates will keep people from coming. So I think there needs to be a discussion on some of it, perhaps being on the tax base. But we need to pass, and like Mr. Brown said, that can happen before the payments start, to have that discussion and hash it out and decide as a town run away the other. Because Mr. Spalding said, you got to pass this now. 1.3 ain't going to last. You know, just think about that. 1.3% interest might not happen next year. You know, so it needs to pass today, and then we can have the thrash out argument as to whether some of this goes on the tax base at a, at a later date. But if this doesn't pass today, those interest rates are going away. I mean, this is the COVID, some of it's probably COVID money that's going away. So if we delay, it's going to cost more.
Thank you. Anyone else for the second time? Mr. Spalding.
I would like a clear answer on the cost per gallon of the water compared to what we have now. I'm thinking that the people out here cannot extrapolate that percentage because they do not know how many gallons they use. They don't carry it in their memory. So if you were to say one gallon would go up 10 cents, then they could, at that point, say, well, I don't know what I use, but I can look at my bill, and I can do an extrapolation. We've got to do an easier way to communicate that cost increase in order, I believe, to get the people to say yes. So what is a better way to do that? If I know, if I, if I know my bill last year was $800, and I know the water's going to go up 5%, I can do that right at my kitchen table. So can you give those numbers of what a gallon of water would cost, and say that that gallon of water goes up 8%? Then the person looks at his $800 bill and says, okay, 8%.
Let me extrapolate from what I presented earlier. And I'll use, starting with the 2.4 people, the 4,000 gallons, if we take it down to around, say, 1,000 gallons, basically, right now, you're paying $52 a month, you'll be paying probably, which, per thousand is probably $13 per thousand. It would be going up in 2026 for that 1,000 gallons, probably about 30, say, $33 a month. So you're going from, what did I say, 13 to 33? Yeah. So over the four years, you're going up quite a bit.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this article before we move on? Mr. Spalding. You need to come up so they can hear you.
That way, I don't have to repeat your question.
My last water bill was $800 in the first year. What would be the increase on that $800?
You need to speak to the microphone, please.
Well, this is on the sewer side. Okay, $800.
Whatever it is, let's, let's get it down. I use 800 gallons.
Sure. 800 gallons, we're looking at a 30% increase, which would be another $240.
So what I'm trying to get is so that the, the people out here can do that, their own calculation, the simplicity of it, rather than.
Yeah. What we're looking at first year, an increase of 30%. Whatever your bill is for sewer this year, 30%. And then each of the next three years, be 25% more each of those years. So.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this before we move on to the next article?
Just one clarif, repeat one point. This sheet I have, how will this, this impact sewer user fees? This is part of the PowerPoint that could be gotten to through the town website. It links you to the Wright Pierce's, a page at Wright Pierce that has, it's probably like a 20, well, this is page 36, but it's the PowerPoint that was presented in the Opera House back in February. Along with there is a copy of the, of, I guess, our current permit, which is 181 pages, if you want to read through all that. And also the order to basically clean up our waste from the EPA, which is, I think, 10 pages, and might be easier reading.
Mrs. North. State your name and address.
Heidi North, 25 Main Street. I just was curious if people were able to change their, you're basing how much, how much money you're going to be getting to pay for this on the current usage. So what happens if that current usage changes, and there's a way for people to not use the system, or the business no longer uses that amount? How, and tell us what happens now with the need for that money that you no longer have? Thank you.
If there's less people using the sewer system, which means there's less water flowing into it, the cost per user will need to go up. If we bring in more people here, say apartments, or an industry that uses water, we'll see a little increase in water use. And so more water will be going through the system. And so the cost of processing that water would probably be the same per gallon. But the overhead cost, the cost of paying off for the structures across the street here, those are fixed costs, those would be spread out among more water.
All right, we are moving on to the next article. Article six. I would ask that you keep your rumbling to a low so that your neighbors can hear the presentation.
I'd like to move Article six to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,410,000 to pay for the permitting, design, construction, and equipping of a proposed new well and its connection to the water system. $2,837,200 to come from federal and state grants, and the remaining $572,800 to come from the issuance of bonds or notes under and in compliance with the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue and negotiate said bonds or notes and determine the rate of interest and time period thereon, and to take such other action as necessary to affect the issuance, negotiation, sale, and delivery of such bonds or notes as shall be in the best interest of the town. And to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend such monies as become available from the federal and/or state governments for use in connection with said project, and pass any votes thereto. This is a non-lapsing article per RSA 32:7, Roman numeral three, and will not lapse until the project is completed or by June 30, 2028, whichever is sooner, in accordance with RSA 33:8-F. Three-fifths majority vote is required, recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Note, there is no tax impact from this article. Repayment of this debt is expected to come from the Water Fund.
Is there a second? Would you wish to speak to the article?
I don't know if there's anything more I can say about it. We've had a couple of municipal, uh, meetings, public meetings, referring to this. This particular well would be out the other side of the airport. Its intended use is as a backup to what we have now, Gilman Pond and the Pollard's Mill as well. And having a well at both ends of town, or a water supply from both ends of town, would give us water security in case we had a blowout of a main up on Unity Road where most of our water comes down. We'd still be able to supply most of the town with water while that was being repaired.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the article?
We have an engineer here to make this slide.
Mr. Kenny? Mr. Kenny is a non-resident. He is the engineer working on the water project from Western and Sampson.
Thank you. And thank you for inviting me to be here tonight. So Article six pertains to the town's north well project. And kind of as mentioned, the primary purpose of this article is to construct a new public drinking water supply for the town in the north portion of the town, up past the airport, off Corbin Road. Really, the, the purpose of this project is to establish increased flexibility, capacity, redundancy, and probably most importantly of all, the resiliency in the overall water system. Currently, as mentioned, you know, all the water systems for the town are at the southern extent of the water system, and really rely on water main infrastructure that's over 100 years old. You know, for a non-technical term, it really puts a lot of eggs in one basket. The purpose of this project would be to diversify where your supply sources are, to give you a little bit of a buffer in case there was ever an issue with any of the infrastructure on the south part of town. So the town has really, you know, been proactive in recognizing this as potential vulnerability, and trying to address the project, you know, overall, and increase that, that flexibility. So this project began in 2018, 2019. The town conducted hydrogeological investigation and the test well drilling program that identified the site and started to prove out its viability for water supply. This past year, the town applied for a large groundwater withdrawal permit through the state. And the expectation is that upon passage of this article, the town will move forward with drilling the actual production well this year, and doing a seven-day pump test on that to basically prove out the final stage of the well's performance. They'll also make a point to monitor water levels in the adjacent wetlands, the Sugar River, and all adjacent public water supply wells, sorry, private water supply wells within 1,000 feet, to just make sure there's a known impact, if any, on any of those water sources. Following that aspect, we would move into constructing the actual infrastructure to bring the well into the overall water system. And that would be done primarily through 2024, potentially in early '25. On the funding side, at risk of sounding like a broken record, there really is an unprecedented amount of money out there. There are two major federal infrastructure bills geared towards public water and wastewater. There probably hasn't been this level of funding available directly to communities to address projects like this since passage of the Safe Drinking Water Act in the 70s. So there's a lot of money out there right now. The town has been extremely tenacious at tracking down that funding. Excuse me, I take a few liberties with the numbers, but it's about an overall $3.5 million project. The town has been successful in finding about $3 million in grant through three separate funding partners. You know, it's over an 80% grant-funded project at this point. So, you know, hats off to them. A lot of work went into that aspect. So a positive vote on this article allows this project to continue. So a positive vote on this article allows this project to continue, allows that funding package to be capitalized on, allows the well to continue to move along towards, you know, being integrated into your water system and providing that public benefit and increasing the overall, you know, resiliency of your water system. So that is the point of Article six. Thank you for your time and questions.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the article? Mr. Collins and then Mr. Carr.
This one doesn't make me quite as angry because the impact isn't quite as bad. How many gallons a day do you propose to pull out of this water source?
The well will be permitted at 400 gallons per minute, which works out to, I believe, about 580,000 gallons a day. That is a maximum capacity, depending on what the town's needs are and demands are. You may not use that on a day-to-day basis.
So does, does this proposed well have the ability to supply 100% of the town's needs of water in a day in the event that we lose the southern end of the water supply?
Yeah, I believe on, on an average day perspective, normal demand condition. Obviously, the hottest day of the summer, major fire, water main break, you can't guarantee that, but average day-to-day, normal conditions, absolutely.
Follow-up?
And you have taken into, from what you told me, you are taking into consideration the fact that as you draw this aquifer down, you are going to analyze the effects because I have heard that there are many people in the area that have private wells. Now, I understand that there is a huge aquifer under this area, but at least you have taken into consideration the impact that it will have on the other people.
Yeah, absolutely. A great question and a very common one. You don't want to create a public water supply source that dewater's the private wells. So the part of the permit approval process is that you do monitor everyone within 1,000 feet of the proposed water source. Primarily, the town's public water supply well is a sand and gravel. Well primarily draws water through soils much higher up. Most of the adjacent private wells are bedrock and they draw water from fractures in the bedrock much lower down. So at least different sources, most of the adjacent wells. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Carr, state your name and address.
Ed Carr Newport, you all hear me? It was kind of blurry before. I'm opposed to this article at this time for the sake of any of the users. We obviously got backed into the corner on the previous article. We have no choice. Even the non-users have to support us because we're all going to get fined if we don't. And I don't want to spend my last year in the shower in prison. But, but I would like to, I'd like to explain a little bit about this free money they talk about. I mean, I think we're overdoing this thing of these, these particular, all these bonds and issues that we're getting. During the COVID, you couldn't buy toilet paper. It was $20 a sheet. So now it's about a nickel a sheet, but I didn't go out and buy 18,000 cases of it. I mean, we need to be thinking. Like the television ad says, liberty says, pay, pay what you need to, right? And anyway, to get down to this one, at the presentation at the town hall, the town manager came up with this particular saying, it's kind of cute. I kind of thought, think it was a Miss America thing. He said, "Water is life." And I, we've got what, 1,300 users I think we're going to be dealing with, maybe up to a little higher than that amongst us that are going to support this, along with the previous one, in fact, would have to. Here's the life of a person my age, and I'm just, I'm going to bore you for 10 minutes, but I'm just going to give you a couple of figures and show you what life is to me. Water's okay, but I got a medical bill here for monthly medical monitor my heart. I got a Celis pill thing. I've got an Express Press for mail order strips. I got a Rite Aid for medicinal medicine. A Celis is that other company again for my monitor. Diamond Hitchcock, I have to, I travel to visit once a year. Valley Regional, the same thing. I know you, I'm boring you, right? I have to have heating oil, right? I have to have electricity. I have to have a telephone and groceries. So that kind of leaves me pretty well scratching for the rest of it. So what's left? Insurance. So what I may have to do is, if we get this, I may have to change my insurance policy to take a higher risk. I see this thing as, as an insurance policy right now. It addresses the water. It's a great thing and we need to do it at some point. I just think the time is wrong. I think the, the fact is that, well, I call it insurance policy. What did I, you lost my, lost my train of thought right there. That had to happen, didn't it? Add that to that list.
Anyone else who wishes to address the article? Did you wish to respond?
Trip after two. I mean, Ed's concerns are valid. We all have them. We all have expenses. And the thing is, you know, as has been said, all our water comes from the south end of town. What was it, two, three weeks ago, we had a break on Summer Street, had a loss of water pressure there. By the time Public Works got that fixed, there was an issue with, I guess, a pressure-reducing valve that caused a break on, by Cross Street. That took a while to find because it was right by the river and it's like, you're looking for the leak, where's, I don't see water running down a street. What was running right into the river? And unfortunately, because of that break, we had to ask Ruger to shut down for a shift. Our biggest employer in town, and because of the low water pressure, low availability of water, they had to shut down a couple of weeks ago for one shift, probably part of a second shift also, until Public Works found the leak, was able to patch it. So we got water pressure back, got the water system back up online, and then they had an op, then they went back and did a proper repair. This is like 81, 82% funded by the state and federal government. I'm amazed how expensive it is to put in a well. $3.5 million, but that's what it costs. This well is not to provide, you know, more capacity into our system. It's basically to provide redundancy. And as we've seen a couple of weeks ago, there are times we're going to need it. And again, a lot of this money is, you know, just available right now. There's a lot of money from the feds hanging around. The town manager and the Public Works Director have been chasing after this money and pursuing this well. I think the site for this well was first looked at probably at least 20 years ago. Town was looking for it. And we have an opportunity right now to basically bring it online and, you know, reduce, reduce our concerns about losing our source of water. As was said, the pipes coming down from Unity Road are quite ancient. So I encourage people to seriously think about supporting this. The chances of being able to put in a redundant source of water for the town, you know, with 80-some percent picked up by other parties is probably going to be few and far between. Thank you.
Follow-up, Mr. Carr?
Yeah, I remind you that that problem was a structure problem and it just doesn't address structure at all. You talk about tying it in. If we were to turn that whole system around, what's to say that the rest of the whole, we know we have a tremendous structure problem, I guess we'll all admit that, and that doesn't address this. So again, it's an insurance policy that we probably can't afford right now.
Yes, it is an insurance policy. And at the same time, we're looking to invest half a million dollars, I think it's like maybe 5.5 million closer, in putting in this redundant water supply. We are currently working on the piping coming down from Unity Road. I'm not sure how many miles it is from down into the center of town, but water, any infrastructure work is ridiculously expensive. Between, I think, $1.3 million approved at a previous town meeting plus another million dollars we picked up either through northern borders or through an earmark, and we're pursuing additional federal funding all the time. We're working on the pipes coming down, but it's, it's probably $50 million plus to upgrade all those pipes. So we're doing that at the same time as we're trying to get in this redundancy. If people feel it's like, well, we'll just fix all the pipes coming down, they'll be good in about 20 years, I think we're going to be disappointed because we can't afford to replace all those pipes at once. So we need to have a backup source from a different direction than we're pulling now.
Mr. Nelson and then Mr. Fratzel.
Yeah, redundancy makes a lot of sense. I mean, in five years, the EPA could say no surface water and that takes Gilman Pond off. And the Pollard's Mill well is not all that far from the old landfill. So redundancy, I mean, they've been talking about this site for ages and redundancy does make a lot of sense. And question I have is, does the town own the land on this proposed site? A number of years ago, the town manager was talking about some non-owned town land and arrogantly said, "We'll just take it by eminent domain. It's swamp land, it won't cost anything." So does the town procure the site already?
Yes, the town does own the property surrounding the well and where the well is itself.
Mr. Fratzel.
The gentleman from South Main Street that just moved to, I forget his last name, but he, he pretty much put this one in perspective. If we'd had this opportunity with sewer years ago, we'd be in a better position with our sewer. So you're not going to get a cheaper time. You wait five years, that thing will be $6 million and it probably have no funding available compared to today. So please vote for this. This, this makes a lot of sense. It's not just, you know, if the water lane breaks, like somebody said, if, if Pollard's is contaminated, if Gilman Pond is contaminated. Last week when that thing shut down, Ruger's missed a whole, they sent down a whole shift, okay? It's really important that we have this water supply system. Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
I just wanted, nobody's asked, but there is no increase in the, projected in the water rates for this project. We will be able to absorb it given the federal monies that will be offsetting the costs.
Anyone else wish to speak for the first time? Anyone? Oh, Mr. Spalding. What was that, 20 years I won't be here thing?
I'm not going to answer that. Well, her wife says she's got to have a new car. She wants a whole new wardrobe. She gets her hair done every other day and you're going bankrupt. But if she left you, you'd have to make your own meals. So the problem here is, look at the menu. This is the second item, both hitting the same people. I am so glad that I have got a septic tank. But if you don't do this, the pipes coming from Unity, most are 100-plus years old, downhill. When they break, gravity takes over and they really empty out. There was a case not too many years ago on the Unity Road where they found the leak, they closed the shut-off valve too quick, and it broke further upstream because of the water pressure increasing because of the stop. That's how fragile the system is. So when that goes, they go out one night and they have it fixed the next morning and we're all set? No. Does Ruger shut down? So you turn this water on and it is my understanding that it might do it, but it won't do it for a continued period of time. Because when you start drawing from a reservoir, it has already reached its height for that time and everything you take out will drop depending on its surface area, how much you can take for a long period of time. So I come up here and say all of this to say, hope, a short prayer for all of you who are on the system. God help you.
Is there anyone else before we move on? Mr. Lunn? State your name and address.
John Lunn, Fletcher Road. I'd like to speak to a slightly larger scope of this issue, and that is that, well, first of all, I know that it is, it's expensive just to live in poverty in this country. And it's, unfortunately, the costs keep going up and we do need to figure out ways to, to share that a little bit better. And I would agree that in the next, that, that we should look at water sewer and perhaps broaden it over the tax. I'm willing to talk about that. But on this particular thing, looking at the large issue, the Colorado River is drying up. There are cities who are starting to lose water. Water is going to be one of the next big issues in this planet. And we're lucky right here in this area that we have an abundance of water, that we can take showers every day, that we can water our lawns, that we can afford to do these things with the water we have. Whether we can afford the price, maybe another thing, but we can afford, but we have the water. But what happens if that changes? This commodity is of such value to us. It's more valuable than anything else. Three days and you're dead without water. If something happens to our water supply and we have a backup system, we may all be going up there with our bottles to fill it up because we have an aquifer there that we can, that we can access, that we can have. I wouldn't talk about redundancy. I talk about necessity. With climate change and things that are going on in, in the world, water is a resource that we have to protect. And I think that we really, really need to look at making sure that it is available to us while we can.
Anyone else who wishes to speak on this article? Daniel Adam, come and state your name and address.
So Daniel Adam, 58 South Main Street, and I hope it's going to be a very simple question. I found the water testing report from 2018 online and it doesn't mention PFOS. Has this well location been tested for that and does it show any positive PFOS readings?
Will you explain the acronym?
Sure. Yeah, PFOS is a family of chemicals, all primarily found in everything these days. It's been a very widespread problem. The proximity of the well's location to the airport definitely raises potential concern just by the association of that. One of the primary uses of PFOS was in firefighting foam, especially aviation firefighting. However, there's no real reason to think that was ever primarily used at this airport. And also, it is part of the standard pump tests that I mentioned to test for all regulated contaminants, of which in the state of New Hampshire, six different PFOS chemicals are on that list. So that will be tested for as part of the, the testing and approval process to make sure that there's nothing in there in excess of, of the regulatory limits.
Anyone else before we move on? We're moving on to Article seven.
Bear with me if you're following along. On page two, there's a typo and the first written-out number, so. I will be making an amendment to that. Let's get through this first one. I moved Article seven to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate as an operating budget not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately. The amount set forth on posted budget with the warrant or as amended by the first session of the annual meeting for the purposes set forth therein totaling $10,45,772. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $10,281,394, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the town or by a law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13, Section 10, in Section 16, to take up the issue of revised operating budget only. The above operating budget includes $56,262 to fund estimated increases for salaries and benefits from amendment... and benefits from amendments to the existing collective bargaining agreements set between the town and the police union. The passage of this article shall be considered not only to the approval of the operating budget for the 2023, 2024 year, but also as approval of the cost items set forth above, such sum representing the additional costs attributable to increases in salaries and benefits required by the amendment, amended agreements over those that would pay under the current collective bargaining agreements. The tax rate of the operating budget is anticipated to be $7.28 and the default budget is anticipated to $6.90. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen.
Is there a second? Do you wish to speak to the article?
Let me make the amendment first, please.
Okay.
So, if you'll turn to page six, you'll see the corrected amendment, which again is that first written-out number, which I'll read. Moderator, do you want the whole amendment read or just the corrected?
You may, if it's the pleasure of the body, he will read only the area that is being corrected.
So, again, it's that first written-out number of $10,451,772. That is the amendment. You'll see that on the page six as corrected. So, to speak on this article, I'd like to thank the citizens that attended the many work sessions that the town held as we worked through this budget process. Every one of the department heads worked very hard to present a very modest, very refined budget. And if there's any questions relative to any specific increases, I would ask the finance director to come up and speak to those. But this was a budget that was worked on very diligently by all the department heads and the board to come up with this very modest budget.
Is the parliamentary situation clear? The original article was written incorrectly when they wrote out the number. The amended article is the correct number and we will be voting on the amendment. They will speak to the amendment. Is anyone wishing to speak to the amendment? If not, all those in favor of the amendment, raise your cards. Those, okay, those opposed, raise your cards. The amendment passes. Article 8.
Good evening.
Excuse me. You need to give me one. That's right. One for me, three. That's great, all right.
Article 8, to see if the town will vote to approve the renegotiated cost items of the collective bargaining agreement reached between the town and the Public Works Union for the four-year period, starting July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2025, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits. Estimated increase from year '23 to '24 is $102,200. From '24 to '25, it is $14,250. And to further appropriate the amount of $102,220 for the cost thereof, such sums representing the additional cost attributable to increases in salaries and benefits required by the amended agreements over those that would be paid under the current collective bargaining agreement. The sum to consist of $59,613 to come from the general fund, $30,511 to come from the water fund, and $12,096 from the sewer fund. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen.
And the tax impact?
And the tax impact is eight cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do you wish to speak to the article?
No, I really have nothing to add.
Does anyone have a question on this article? If not, we will move on to Article 9.
Thank you. I move to bring up Article 21 at this point in time.
Is there any objection from the body of moving Article 21 to this time? If not, we will take up Article 21 out of order. Mr. Spalding, are you going to read the article?
Yes, ma'am. Virginia, we had the conversation. You want me to read the article as it is now before amendment?
Correct. You have the petitioned article, the actual one?
Yes, I do, but let me read what Paul has just given me, please.
That's, that's it. That's Article 21.
Okay. Where did you get that from, Paul?
We've got the articles for the board and for the legislature.
You need to give me a copy.
I will.
It's your same article. It is exactly the same they printed out from the warrant. They just make it in big print so I can see it.
But it doesn't include, it doesn't include the change?
No.
Whatever was on the warrant.
Just what was on the warrant.
Okay, I guess I'll read the larger print. Shall the town vote to lease a portion of the Public Works Garage facility located on Route 10, consisting of the easterly two bays, that's the two bays on the Route 10 side?
Read the article as it is written.
Yes, ma'am. That's not the first time she's street me out. All right, where was I?
Which are?
Which are approximately 44 feet in width, together with adequate parking and access thereto, and access to sanitary facilities to the Newport School District for the purpose of storing, maintaining, and repairing its vehicles and other equipment for a period of 99 years, commencing May 15th, 2023, at an annual rent of $1, with no additional cost of the said school district. School district may, at its own cost, make leasehold improvements as it deems necessary.
This article is by petition. Is there a second?
Second.
Do you wish to speak to the article?
Yes, I do, Virginia, but I still got to do that because I'm not going to make the mistake. So, here, originally on the article, piece of paper that I have, read at an annual rent of $1, with no additional cost to the district. And what we need in there is if we're a one-time charge. Okay, so the amendment, this can't be used as we read it, so it's got to be amended.
Are you proposing an amendment to this article?
I am.
I don't think you can amend it to this discussion.
No, he can amend it. Do you have the amendment that you want to propose?
Yes.
Hand a copy for me. There has been a request for a ballot vote on this article. So, I would caution supervisors to be prepared with the ballots and the box. Mrs. Spalding, you have the floor.
I'll explain the reason for that. Raising your hand tells your neighbor and your friends and everybody else in the room how you voted. On an emotional issue, it should have privacy. So, it may be slightly inconvenient, but the most important thing in a democracy is the democracy and your right to vote without anybody knowing how and what you voted.
Read your amendment, please.
The amendment I'm going to read now removes the...
Just read it as you amended.
Just read it as amended.
Correct.
The whole thing, okay. Shall the towns vote, town vote to lease a portion of the Public Works Garage facility located on Route 10, consisting of the easterly two bays, which are approximately 44 feet in width, together with adequate parking and access thereto, and access to sanitary facilities to the Newport School District for the purpose of storing, maintaining, and repairing its vehicles and other equipment for a period of 99 years, commencing May 15th, 2023, for a one-time payment of $1, with no additional cost to the said school district. The school district may, at its own cost, make leasehold improvements as it deems necessary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Spalding, do you wish to speak to your amendment? Now you can tell them where the bays are.
The reason for the amendment is, it was originally written to be a dollar a year, therefore it was, it reached $99 at 99 years, and you cannot encumber funds for more than one year. So, what I did was I took the $98, we would have given them away, and keeping that for the school district, and gave them $1 period for the entire period.
Anyone wish to address this article? Come up and state your name, please. I'm sorry.
Ken Merrill, Four Willow Street. I guess my question, I mean, the town needs to play well with the school. We've been fighting this issue for a while. But my question, you're a school board member, that bill was somewhere in the $6,000 to $8,000 range for rent. Is the school going to give us an inverse proportion to take it off the school portion of the taxes?
We are speaking to the amendment.
He's speaking to the amendment.
Just to the amendment.
Then I would urge everybody not to vote for this until next year's school meeting, when the school reduces their rent out of the budget because it's coming out of the tax revenue side, okay? The school was paying rent until they defaulted and didn't pay, okay? The school...
Honor, this is not a debate.
The school was paying rent. Now the town doesn't have the rent. The school, in their next budget, needs to remove this from their budget and get the offset in the tax. Simple as that. Thank you.
Anyone else wish, do you wish to respond to that, Mrs. Spalding?
Yeah, the amendment is only on the $99, is my interpretation.
Correct. Anyone else wish to speak to the article?
Speak to the amendment for the article.
The amendment.
You said article.
Oh, well, I'm sorry. The article is now the amendment. My apologies for confusion. It is confusing.
Amendment has not passed yet.
Correct, it has, we have not voted it. Do you wish to, you have to speak now before we vote. On the amendment, Mr. Carr.
I just, I just think something really shady happened here and I think that's what a lot of people believe is going on around here, that all of a sudden this, this happened, they jacked the rent up on the school in the middle of the season for what I consider to be no particular reason. That's an injustice to not only the school people, it's you and I. We're not going to get a damn dime difference. It's just going to show up on, on whose budget it is. I don't care how you look at it. It's crazy thing, it's just a goddamn, and we, there must be, there might be something else behind it. Maybe they decided we have a better use for that garage now because, because we don't want to put these costs on here. But I want to remind you, and I left my glasses back there, in 1978, there's a town manager's report, oh boy, that was written by Jim, oh, did you read that?
I'm going to.
Can I do it?
It doesn't speak...
You may speak as you choose, Mr. Carr.
Okay. I guess, Bert says enough, I'm going to say it. This is by James Hannigan, back in 1978, 79, I should say, March 13, 79, town meeting. The town manager wrote, "The plans for the public garage have been improved by combining with the school and should be supported by everything. Savings will help pay for the cost." It was determined then, thank you, that, that, that was the best feasible solution for us, for, for to share the cost of that thing and everybody should get the usage. Now, now all of a sudden they get tossed out and they're going to use a different term, but something, something went wrong here and it should not change the school. We shouldn't uproot their system in the middle of the season like this. I understand what you're talking about budget-wise to wait, but it's the wrong time.
Sir.
Wayne Bodman, 59 Pine Street. Understand, when this all went through in 78, the buses and the towns together, the same mechanics out of the highway garage took care of the buses and they just build the school. Now the highway doesn't have anything to do with working on the buses, they have their separate mechanic and they can't use that building. So, if this doesn't pass so we can turn around and have those two bays, that means the school is going to have to raise more money to buy property or buy a building someplace to put these buses in to be able to work on. The bays that are there now, that my buddy Eddie works in there, there's a dirt floor, nothing, you know, he lays on a piece of cardboard, changes the oil, changes filters, everything. The money that's set up for it will help put a cement pad in there and be able to work on the place. So, I would recommend to vote for it because Eddie's going to be 90, I mean, 80, 80 years old tomorrow and he ain't going to be many more years before you're going to have to pay for somebody bigger to do it. If you have to send him out to a big garage, you know, like Reed's or Patton's, you're just going to spend many more dollars to have it done if you don't have a place to work on them. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on the amendment? Sir in the back?
Can I, can I do a point of order, Virginia?
One, I recognize the gentleman in the back. I will not, I will get your point of order and yours.
Okay, everybody's speaking, everybody, it seems that they're speaking to the article.
Mr. Scott's first. Come, come, come. What's your point of order?
You just came to the main motion.
The amendment will become the main motion and it's done.
You just said, I think it's a little bit of a confusion here. Some people don't use this. It never...
I think Madam Moderator, Robert Scott Summitt wrote, "I think that people are a little confused because now they think that they're going to wait to speak to this after we vote, but this is the time to speak if you're going to speak on this." Is this correct, Virginia?
This is correct because the amendment will become the main motion and then you can speak to it again.
Thank, thank you.
If I confused you, I'm sorry.
After this vote, you can speak to it.
Yes.
Okay, this is it, it's done.
I meant it became the, the main motion. I will not accept move the motion. What was your motion? Point of order.
I need to know that we're speaking on just the amendment.
We are.
Because the speak seems to be on the article.
It is relevant to the discussion.
Okay.
So, if the amendment passes, you can then speak to the article.
Correct.
Okay. And, and the, the secret ballot is not on the amendment?
Oh, yes, it is, yes. That's what you asked for.
Okay, to be, okay, because it makes it real. Okay, so I'm, I'm ready for that.
Okay, and you probably want it twice, on the, on the amendment and on the main motion, which will be it again.
So, Bert, at this point in time, you should speak to the merits of the actual thing because people are going to vote on it without hearing all of the information and that way there, they won't be able to make a substantive decision, so this is your moment.
Okay, then I shall grasp it.
Are you ready?
Yes, Virginia, I am ready. I'm going to shuffle this back around here to get it in order. I want to start with the town manager's report as has already been read. This was 1978, Town Manager's Report to the Selectmen, Employees, Citizens, and Taxpayers of Newport. Now I'm skipping down to the pertinent part for the issue we are here tonight. Now I'm skipping down to the pertinent part for the issue we are here tonight. "The plans for the Public Works Garage have been improved by combining with the school and should be supported by everyone. It became Article sixteen, "To see if the town will vote to approve and adopt the recommendations of the Budget Commission Committee, raise and appropriate the various sums contained in the report and listed in the budget. Item A, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred fifteen thousand dollars for the purpose of constructing a public works garage, and to remodel the old highway sheds for use by the ambulance service, and to authorize payment by the following means." I'm not gonna read the two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar bond. "The results of the vote voted Public Works Garage two hundred and ninety-three, four, and ninety-two against." That being said, there was planted seeds of community, working together. The garage itself, about two hundred feet of it, goes now for the use of the highway garage, and it is exactly two hundred feet, a hundred and twenty on one side of bays, eighty on the other, and then forty-four feet for what is now the bus park. But history is a good teacher. At the beginning, when this community spirit was amongst everybody, the mechanic did the work of both the town and the school in the, in the town side. We paid the fees, the costs, the parts, the labor, the school paid. That ended at some point, and now the little things are done by us, the bigger things are done by S.G. Reed. Now I own a business, and I make, I make a profit, that's the whole reason you do it, anything else would be wrong. So S.G. Reed, we're paying for a portion of his lights, his sewer water, whatever he's got, his labor helps, his insurance, all of his business expenses are rolled into his hourly rate, which we pay significantly more than what we paid Eddie to do our work. So that is one significant change, and that was some years ago. Now, we talk about where we are now. We lost, they took, one bay and put us down to two, so we lost a third of the area that we had. They wound up with cement floors, we wound up with dirt. They have heat, we have none. They have insulation, we have none. What really happened was, we get pushed out, but we accepted it and agreed to it, so we can't change history. That's what it is. But then came a letter that we found in the email, in an email search dated December ninth, twenty twenty-one, and it's from Todd Chardia to Superintendent They're asking for the two bays. The point I wanna get out of this letter is just one paragraph, hard to read because it didn't print out good, but I'll do my best. "The second issue that we are having is plumbing. Drainage issues within the building bathrooms specifically. The urinal in the men's room indefinitely out of service, and we are having issues with the sink drains. It is going to be a major undertaking to address these issues, as the majority of the plumbing of these two reasons..." No, can't read that last line. Okay, but you get it. "The urinal doesn't drain, the sinks don't drain, and you got a long run underneath a cement floor that goes to a tank. The tank can't be buried underneath there, because you'd never be able to get to it, so the tank is somewhere, and the sewage or whatever's getting to it. What do you do in your house? What do you do?" Tim Beard, you, you there? Tim, can you come and see if you can unplug my urinal, my sinks, and my toilets, and all of that stuff? You don't use it as an excuse to shut the bathrooms down. You fix it. And if, in fact, the town is our landlord right now, with the locked door where the drivers could not get through, out of their section, into the other section to go to the bathroom, I rent. You rent to a tenant, and the toilet doesn't work, you get the damn thing fixed, or you pay the motel room, you pay the meals, you pay everything. They've done nothing but lock the door. Well, they really didn't lock the door, excuse me. There was a door there closed that didn't have a key there, but now it has a key. So we have been paying about six thousand dollars a year for eighteen, nineteen years, as best we can find. So in that eighteen, nineteen-year period, we were paying also for the bay that they took away. So do an, so they came up with an extrapolation of ten thousand dollars XXX, and the XXX must be nine ninety-nine in my book, with no abatement on the bay they took away, which would have been one-third. So, that being said, what I'm trying to point out to you is the unfairness, the absence of community, the absence of thinking, and that, right at this point, should be pretty clear. It is no different than reaching into your right pocket and taking out six thousand dollars and sticking it in the other pocket. You have no more money. You have just shifted it to another entity. So we paid the six. We talked about our problems with the bus garage and made a motion that we don't pay the rent, that we put it into leasehold improvements. A cement floor, maybe, so that the mechanic can work on the buses, because you can't put a jack on a dirt, dirt doesn't work. A creeper doesn't roll very well, and it's not safe. And you may have to go to the toilet. So, all of that said, it is you paying you. One looks good, the other one looks bad. And right now, they're trying to, they're gonna try and paint a picture that we're the bad boys. So you're really gonna have to think about this, but as you vote, who did wrong and who did right? Locking of the bathrooms, pushing the buses out, the mechanical work not being done in-house, It's a travesty. It's wrong. So what does this article do? This article gives us the two bays that we remain with, without cement floors, without insulation, without heat. And so we'll take the six thousand dollars that we would have paid them each year and put it into improvements to improve it for our help. Ah, who are our help? Elderly? How do they get snow off a roof of a bus? They say, "Oh, all of the buses are parked outside." I rebutted them by clamont, buses were inside. Wayne Boardman, he was the mechanic over there, and they even had a system where when the bus came in, it would spray underneath to get the salt off of the buses, so that the buses had more longevity than us. What a wonderful idea. And they were parked inside. Wayne, can you give me the number of years, just a number?
I did, for thirteen years.
Okay.
That was eighty-eight to nineteen.
So their buses inside, but yet they'll come up and say, "All the buses there are inside." Well, some districts do have theirs outside. The snow has to be removed before they can leave. You're a CDL driver, you drive it down the road with snow on the top of that roof, you lose your CDL. It's that simple. Don't do it. Well, where do they park their dump trucks? They got the plows on them and et cetera. Inside the garage, on their side. I can't wait till they get to this podium, so I'm gonna stop where I am, because I'm gonna cherish beating the hell out of them for their lies.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the amendment? Do not display your pleasure at this discussion. Mr. Fratso, then the lady with the glasses behind the lady with the blue.
Seeing Bert wants to speak to the content of this, I'm gonna as well. This is not about where to park buses, as much as there's a bigger issue here that taxpayers need to think about. You got a pissed-off school board, you got a pissed-off Selectment Board. We can't shuffle costs. This is crazy. Next year, there's gonna be a petition article. We might as well put a fire truck on the school, school side. Why not, right? You cannot carry expenses from one group to the other and have any clue what it costs to educate kids or run the town. It's ludicrous. There's a cost to operate those buses. There's a cost to maintain those buses. There's a cost to house them, if that's what you wanna do, you know? There's a dozen districts around here that put them outside. But I understand, more efficient, easier to find help if they don't have to clean the bus off. But when somebody asks you, "What's it cost to educate a student in this town?", when you're trying to figure out tuition agreements, those costs need to be in this budget, in this building, not on the town side. So to somehow think that you're gonna just stop paying rent for a building that must be maintained, must be taken care of, has a capital cost to replace, and shift it to the town side is crazy. Maybe we'll have a petition article so that Ben and the guys over at the county can take on one of our fire trucks. That'd be great, too. So the two boards gotta figure out the bus thing, but this community needs to know damn well that if you start pushing costs from one group to the other, you'll never know what it costs to run anything around here. It's, it's absolute insanity, and on top of that, quite frankly, I doubt it's legal. This could happen, you're basically superventing the way we do local government. So now we're gonna have a petition article for every single thing in this community on where you wanna put it? It's crazy. So think long and hard. You've got people here that are upset personally about an issue, and the bigger issue is how you finance and take account of these expenses. You're, you're gonna go down a slippery slope that is real bad, and quite honestly, if it is illegal, you're gonna spend a lot of money in legal fees. So I urge everybody to really think about this, reach out to both boards, cut the nonsense, and figure out how to, where to put these buses, but do not approve this measure to basically nullify any expense for that storage and put it on the town side, because they have an expense. It's a real expense. Thank you.
Lady with the glasses. State your name and residence.
Nicole Morris, Newport. The gentleman in blue earlier had made a comment that the school board was not paying for the, um, storage of the buses. Can that be? Can anybody give an answer to that? I was under the impression that it has been.
That's a question, I believe, for the school board. Does someone from the school board wish to address that, as it relates to this article?
We have been paying the six thousand dollars, which was really is five thousand eight-hundred dollars, um, back sixteen to nineteen years, is all we could find.
Thank you. Gentleman with the plaid hat. Well, not plaid, sorry.
Martin Doughty, three seven three Sunbury Street. No, no concrete, no heat, no insulation. What cost is that driving? Where, the roof over the, over the, over the, the bays? Come on, people, be community for crying out loud. This, this sucks.
Mr. Jeffrey from South Main Street.
Jeff Sabriski in Newport, New Hampshire. This is a dog I have a fight in, gentlemen. I'll start with, what is it, last week's meeting? I had a neighbor come up. I don't get involved in politics. When I get involved in politics, it's probably not a good thing. Bert, you ever met me before?
No, sir.
Do you know me?
No.
My neighbor came up Sunday night and said, "Hey, would you mind going to a meeting and discussing something?" And I said, you know, "What's it about? I have no clue." So I said, "Well, give me a little information." Now, not the brightest neighbor in the world, but he's all right.
You are speaking to the article?
Yes, I am. The article is about...
The amendment.
The amendment, pardon me.
Yep.
It's not a vote. Good thing. A school bus terminal located within a town garage. All right. Let me see what I can find out about it. So I took off three or four hours early yesterday, went to find a town garage. That was quite interesting. No sign, no indication of what it was. Now, how many of you in here have a commercial driver's license, CDL?
It's irrelevant.
It, it's actually very relevant, if you don't mind, because I deliver, and I have one, to just about every bus terminal and town garage in the state of Vermont and a good portion of New Hampshire. the state of Vermont and a good portion of New Hampshire. I found one that didn't even have a sign on it. Didn't know where it was. I had to use Google to look it up. Gentleman just stated very eloquently, it's one pocket to another, be careful what you choose. Okay, I'll be careful what I choose. Choose a meeting of last week where a person I do happen to know was slightly treated with what I have heard, I haven't seen it, a little less professional decorum than I would expect out of the selectmen of this town. Now, normally, had I not known this person, would not be an issue to me. I would say, okay, well, maybe it was deserved. Having known Ms. Darling for a few years, I'm thinking to myself, that does not make sense to me. But apparently she held her decorum better than some of the people on the board. So my statement is very simple. I have listened to Burt a few times. Sometime Burt frustrates the hell out of me.
I would ask you to stop expressing your opinion so we can move on with this meeting.
Here's my opinion.
Not you, sir, I'm talking to people.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
I want your opinion, I don't want theirs.
And sometimes, I honestly, just a personal opinion would take you out back to a woodshed and discuss it.
I know Japanese, three other Japanese words, Honda Suzuki.
That's good. So we'd have a good discussion. But what I'm bringing up here is something very simple. So yesterday I went to that garage. I asked the board that wrote that letter, that I heard about, haven't read, have you been to the garage, the bus section? You don't have to answer. It's okay. It's a yes or no, but I'm going to assume as a Southerner that you have. Because as a town manager and a select board, you would want the best for every one of your employees that works for this town. I support the police, the fire department, the town employees, the workers, the guys that plow the snow all night long. And for God's sakes, probably one of the more important ones that's overlooked are the damn bus drivers. Because they have the responsibility for our kids and grandkids. I'm lucky. My wife takes our three grandkids to school. It's not a burden on the town. But if it was, and now you're saying, well, you've got to vacate in three months. Oh, but tell you what, we'll give you some land to build a new building. And that building will be done in two months. I challenge you to find me a engineer and a budget with today's interest rates to get that done. I hold several licenses in a lot of different areas. They all mean squat when it comes to the kids' wellbeing. So I'm asking you, think about this. The gentleman is absolutely right. It's one pocket to another. If they got to go out and build a building, guess what? Next year's school budget, what's going to be in it? A new school building. Who's going to pay for it? Well, I give you your audience. They're going to pay for it. So you can approve it. But you start taking things away from the men in blue, the fire department, the kids, the town, and those workers that support and build this community every day, you're going to have a tough battle on your hands. I don't need a lawyer. Tell you what I will commit to. I'll go out and I will talk to Carroll Concrete, Weed, I will get volunteers from this community. You've got the equipment. I will find us a way to get a concrete floor in. I couldn't believe when I walked in there. My God, I work on heavy equipment sometimes because I've got to fix my truck. If I can't crawl with a creeper, that means I'm crawling through mud. You had four bays at one point or three?
Uh, three, but...
Three, all right, you had three bays.
I had four, but three.
You had three bays. Now you've got two. You've got two different ones. Yesterday, I visited that lot, first time. Shame on me. Good Lord, shame on me. Talked to a young man named Caleb. Young guy, in there early, was there late. I know, I just finished 12 hours, I should have been a little longer.
Could you please speak to the issue, sir?
The issue is, the man is there doing his job. And he explained to me things that were going on that we should all, as a community, be aware of and be willing to chip in and flip and fix. So if it's an issue of money or rent being withheld, fine. Deal that out of the picture. What is it going to take to make it work to put heat in a building where people work? You get on a creeper and try and get through a stone, mud-infested pit because they have to rinse the trucks off. I've been there, I worked on them. Many of you have too, and you know exactly what I'm talking about. You don't want to fix your brakes in the rain, and you don't want to do it on mud. You jack up that bus and something goes wrong because you have an emergency because you've already got three buses down, and you're cramming them in like sardines, which I understand. Unless the town or the school presents a budget that's going to put a scraper on, then you can't park them outside. Who's going to take the snow off the top? So that's my point. I agree with everybody. But I disagree with taking one thing out of one pocket and putting it into the pockets of the taxpayers and saying, well, now you've got to fix it. So on that note...
Mrs. Urban?
Thank you for your time.
Sharon Urban, 101 Laurel Street. I want to begin with a question, and that is, aren't we supposed to be deciding whether we're doing $1 for 99 years or a dollar a year? Isn't that the amendment we're talking about now?
That is, that is correct.
And after that amendment is voted and passed, will I have an opportunity to add a new amendment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, just Seth, Seth Wilder.
Seth Wilder, 104 Corners Turnpike, Newport. I tried to make sense of this when, when this all began and figure out what was actually going on. So what I heard was that the school board decided they weren't going to pay rent anymore. The town then decided they were going to evict them. I thought, hmm, that didn't make much sense to me. So the town effectively said, we're going to take this $6,000 roughly and remove that income. Okay, so the town then, by my opinion, voted to remove that income. Okay, so then the school was looking at, what is the next solution? Because our buses, we have no place to work on them. Okay? So then this come, came around and it's like, okay, if this is the way that we're not going to play together, here was the end around, you know? We're going to have this free lease or a dollar lease for however, in perpetuity. So I was for that, actually. And I still am for it. Really what I'm for is that the town and the school work together. Really, really, we need that to happen. We can't have a healthy town when we pit one against the other. And it is one pocket or the other. And I also am for a pro-business, a town that is pro-business relative to the parking, but that's not the point here. So then we look at this cost of production argument. So I do cost of production with farms a lot. So $6,000 is just chump change relative to a $19 million budget. It is not going to impact what we determine for the cost of educating a student, in my opinion. I wish this wasn't the case. I wish the town and the school worked together. Boy, do I wish that. But they didn't. And so you cut your nose to spite your face, as my mom said. And so now I am for this, I'm for removing that $6,000. And maybe we can find a better solution in the future, but that's my position right now.
Sir, sir with the card hat shirt, you were waving your hat. Did you want to speak? You? Yeah. Okay, sorry.
Good evening. Jenna Darling, 92 South Main Street. I really wish I wasn't here to speak on this. I wish it didn't have to come to this. No big surprise here when I say Burt and I don't agree on a lot. We've been through a lot. But we met in the middle here. And I will be the first to say that our two, in my opinion, and our, our two boards didn't do a good job communicating with each other. We could have done better. We should do better. And here we are. I'm really, I, I hear us all talking about the money. I hear us all talking about adults learning how to get along with each other and communicate. But nobody's really talked about the kids. When I was at a select board meeting, I was told, well, I, I don't really see what the cost is. I, I think the cost is being able to transport our kids safely with bus drivers that we're able to retain and employ. I don't think we can do that, I, if we were moved out into the yard. I just don't. As the man in the red hat so eloquently said, he visited the bus barn yesterday. It's something that I should have done a long time ago. I worry about our driver's safety, having to work on our buses on a dirt floor. I work about, worry about the longevity of our buses. I wish we weren't here, but we are. And I am asking for your support on this. And then I'd like to move on as a, as a town of Newport with a school board and the town select board together. Because I'm tired of it. I've only, I haven't been here that long. I haven't been on a board that long. But I'm tired of it. And if we all can make that effort, I think it would be an improvement. But for this petition, I think it's important. I think it's important for our students, for our drivers, and for our town.
Thank you.
Robert Scott, Summit Road. Well, I guess there's three sides to every story. Yours, mine, and let's talk about what actually happened. So two years ago, when, as Burt mentioned, the memo from December 9th of 2021. Every week I visit the school district in my capacity. I am his the office, his treasurer and his clerk. And upon that day, Brendan, Dr. Minhead, said to me that the school board voted that they were no longer going to let the town use the high school for any of its election activities. I was very unhappy with that. I work well with all of these ladies. Lee Dufour, the checklist supervisors. In fact, and you'll have to forgive me, Lee. Lee is the most professional person I work with in this community, in my opinion. So much so, and I know you're a little modest, Lee. Lee was elective president of the New Hampshire City and Town Clerks Association. A great honor, worthy to receive. I believe in celebrating people positive activity.
Mr. Scott, please speak to the amendment.
Sorry. So he said the school board had reacted because the, the town had decided that they were going to push us out of this garage. I then related to Brendan, being an old guy from institutional memory and tribal memory, all of the period of time that we had been cooperative. And it was very important to me that we would continue in that level of cooperation. And I said, you know, I have a great relationship with Hunter. Would you mind if I go and see him today? Give me your blessing. I did. I went and saw Hunter, and he graciously received me. And I have to tell you, I've never had an unprofessional or impolite conversation with the man. And I came there and I asked him a question. What is the greater good? And he goes, what do you mean? Why do you do your job? And he goes, it's like a trick question? You do your job because government's job is to create the greater good. And we create harm. We're not doing our job correctly. So tell me, how you and I are going to get together at this moment, and we're going to resolve this issue. And we spoke for a period of time. We came up with a workable solution. And I said, you wait right here, I'm going to go talk to Brendan. Got in my car, I went back and I talked to Brendan, went over the issues with him. And Brendan said that's something that he would talk with Jenna, and he would get it done. And I thanked him, and I came back to you again. And I said to you, Hunter, that this thing was going to be remedied, that you would continue to vote at the high school, that we would continue to share the garage, and all of the situation would take care of itself. That was very, very important to me, to be honest with you. So for my, for my part, the way I look at it this evening, and all of the manufactured circus you hear about, the whole thing, this was all preventable with one phone call. One phone call, a couple of polite, professional conversations. That's the world I live in every day. Instead, we have all of this. And we'll get into the legality, gentlemen, in one second. You're going to really like that. This could have been completely prevented. And why it wasn't prevented, I don't know, to be quite honest with you. And this may seem naive, and this may seem naive to you, but in the next breath, I was asked my opinion about this by the current board. And they had the opportunity to go back like the board did two years ago and say, you no longer would be able to use our facility. But you know what I told them? When they go low, we go high. Two wrongs don't make a right. And the innocent should never suffer for someone's poor decision. And that's the way I felt about it. And the only reason we're here tonight is the goodwill of this board who put their duty before their personal opinions. Something that I wish all of us could do here this evening. So for myself, what do you do? What do you do in a situation where there is an absence of trust? How do you deal with that? In my professional opinion, you have to codify and bifurcate. And that's what they've done. They went back and they're going to bifurcate some element, separate out some of this element of the agreement. They're going to then create a legal carve-out, and from that legal carve-out, they're going to do something that they need to do. We can't do this every couple of years, gentlemen. We're trying to run a stable operating environment. How do you run a stop, a separate, separate environment that's stable when you have to deal with this every single other year? The question of legality, let's talk about that for a second. So we hear that, number one, and I go back to Paul Brown. Hello, Paul Brown. You know, if we actually look, and I've been your treasurer 35 years, long time, and I bring a lot of institutional memory. And there is no actual, there is no actual written agreement at all, as you're well aware. There's no written agreement. Actually, in the legal sense, there's not even a letter agreement. The only type of relationship we have with you gentlemen... The only type of relationship we have with you, gentlemen, listen very carefully. It's on the basis of experience and the term and condition of the payment itself. That's how it works, to be honest with you. So we pay this, and by the payment, we state a specific level of obligation. But conversely, that presents specific requirements for you as the lessor of the building. And we'll get to that. So we hear now that we breached the agreement. Well, I have to tell you, actually, no. In the summer of 2022, the superintendent expressed concerns about safety issues in the building. She went there, and she can come up and address this. I don't know all, every little detail of it. So by her addressing the safety concerns, to you as the lessor, let's go back to contract law 101. So if you breach even one article of your agreement, you've nullified the agreement. So are people going to come up here and talk about the agreement being breached by the board? No. We get into this discussion about the payment. Very interesting. So they had a retreat in October of 2022. And they stated that they were going to withhold the payment. That's what they were going to go and do. Okay. They never notified you of it. In fact, in January, when Hunter sent to the superintendent a letter, an email, asking if we were going to, he heard that we were no longer going to re-up with our agreement. She responded to him that we were. So in the case of that, you receive notification. It was prima facie evidentia. And in that way, there, you folks, when you come and say that they tried to nullify the agreement, no. You nullified it on the basis of your inability to satisfy the terms and conditions of what a lessor does for a lessee. Then in terms of the actual way that the acceptance of the payment. Has the payment been made consistently? It has. But again, and the real critical issue here is, we're one community. We're two lungs in one body. So for us, that's why there's no, like, formalized agreement here. And what there is instead is a loose working arrangement. And it's one of the big criticisms I have when I deal with doing business up here. Is everything is informal, and that's great. While everything is going good, but the minute it all falls apart, it's really bad. So what is the corrective action? The corrective action for the board is to move forward with this type of carve-out. Did anybody ever take the time to go and sit down and try to substantively discuss it? You people talk at each other. You don't talk with each other. We just had an election several weeks ago. Could not have the election without these people. I don't understand. It really baffles me. I mean, and it's interesting with the board. Let's talk about them for a second. So the board, because they believe, you folks follow a very unilateral authority approach. You're in charge. There's no doubt about it. When I watched those tapes, you guys, you five guys are in charge. My board's not like that. My board follows a very consensual authority approach. That's New Hampshire tradition. So they didn't run to Superior Court, gentlemen, and say, oh, these people violated the agreement. We're going to run to Superior Court. Where did they go? Like Daniel Webster would have did. He went to the people. And they said to the people, give us your consent. Give us your consent so that we can protect our entity. Somewhere in the midst of all of it, all this would have taken was one phone call. And we could have got this done. But instead, here we are, a manufactured circus. I asked the community's support of this so that we can kind of move on. And hopefully, Jeffrey, been friends with you people forever, sit down, have a dialogue, and try to move forward and talk with each other and not at each other. I have very high expectations. And thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this article, this amendment? I would ask you to be succinct and to not repeat what somebody else has already said. Mr. North.
So I guess I failed to understand some of this because we're really not talking about very much money. So in terms of finances, it seems like a bit of a moot subject. So what I'm trying to understand is, why can't the buses be in the garage? And if the buses aren't going to be in the garage, in a 44-foot garage, which probably fits the bus, what's going in their place? I don't know the answer to that. And if they're empty, why can't the buses go there? Do we have an answer to what is going in the garages? Anyone? Bert, do you know that? Do you know what's going to in these now empty garages?
Do I know what now?
Yeah, what is going to take the place of the buses in the garages? I assume there's a use for them now. Can anyone answer that?
Does anyone on the board wish to address it? If not, there is no answer for you, Mr. North.
Okay. So I suspect that I know the answer to that, since nobody wants to answer it. I suspect that possibly the ambulances are going to have to go in there. Why? I don't know. Those were supposed to go in the rec center. Will the bus fit in the rec center? Anyone know that? Probably not. Will the ambulances? Probably yes. Is there a budget shortfall? I don't know. Board's not answering my question, so I have to guess. Because if we're going to have empty garages, we might as well put buses in them. We're not talking about money here. Not when we're talking about, you know, water and sewage bills at a rate, you know, of triple or quadruple what we're paying. That's money. That hurts. I really think we should talk about the elephant in the room. So I wish the board would answer me. But I guess no one cares to discuss that.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to? I will after this speaker.
Darrell Jones, 83 Laurel Street. Years ago, I was an EMT on the ambulance here.
Are you speaking to the school bus issue?
I'm speaking to what you're going to do with the vehicles. Okay. And there were many discussions as to what to do with the ambulances. And we decided that we needed to keep them in the center of town because that's where the center of demand is. Now we're talking about if we can put the ambulances down the bus barn if the buses come out of there. You're talking to the south end of town. You're talking time for people to respond from their homes, fire station, or what have you, to get there. And basically, you're talking increased service to our sick clients. So keep that in mind, too, if you're going to put the ambulances in the bus barn.
The question has been called. Is there a second? Sufficient hands to call the question? There are not sufficient hands. We will continue debate. The question has been called.
Junior, can I speak to it, please?
No, not at this time. The question has been called. Are there sufficient hands to move the question? Thank you. We will now vote on the amendment which you have. I hope the parliamentary situation is clear. There is a single change from the original article. And the amendment adds for a one-time payment in front of $1 and removes at an annual rent. A secret ballot has been called. You will come with your card to the front, get a ballot, and vote, and we will wait for the count.
[Crosstalk]
Has everyone voted? Then we are closing the ballot box. Thank you. Please attend to the state of the vote. On the amended article, the yays are 111, the noes are 18, the amendment passes. So the article now, the article 21 now, is the article as amended. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the article? Mr. Spaulding, Mrs. Urban, and Mrs. North?
Hello? There we go. A little bit of humor. Usually I take up a lot of time speaking. Still can't hear me up there? Try that. So anyways, I am very pleased with the support for the article. But like the traditional Burt, I have come up with four additional items. The town has really no costs, as somebody said, except electricity. We are willing to do the electricity ourselves. The second item that was brought up about petitions and whatever, in this short statement, petitions are not an aberration of our government. It is our form of government. Number three, if this does not pass, we go to lease buses in high probability because we have no housing for them and we can't protect our employees who are cleaning snow off of vehicles that are 11 feet high. And the last, we set up the town's election here for tonight, and we will pick it up after. Our help that we pay, meaning the school, our lights that we pay, our heat, our accommodation as being a community member. That is enough said. All of what we said now already to get to here need not be said again. I would ask the moderator to allow us to call the vote at this point.
There is no vote. This article goes on the warrant as amended unless somebody else amends it.
Okay. Then I will step down and we'll wait to see if that happens.
Mrs. Urban.
Sharon Urban, 101 Laurel Street. I want to start by thanking our boards, both the selectmen and the school board, because they do a thankless job that we stay home from. And I also want to thank our town employees. I do not believe I have ever voted against a negotiated agreement, nor do I believe I have ever voted against an infrastructure improvement. And I've been here about 40 years. At this time, I'm going to offer an amendment to this that you may love it, you may hate it, I hope you will vote quickly on it, and then we will proceed.
It must be in writing, in two copies.
There's one copy.
Thank you.
There is another copy.
Thank you.
Here is another copy.
You only need two, Mrs. Urban.
I was a school teacher. Shall the town vote to lease a portion of the Public Works Garage Facility located on Route 10, consisting of the easterly two bays which are approximately 44 feet in width, together with adequate parking and access heretofu, and access to sanitary facilities to the Newport School District for the purpose of storing, maintaining, and repairing its vehicles and other's equipment throughout FY '24 at the annual rent voted in the FY ' '24 school budget? Furthermore, whereas the taxpayers of the town fund both the school district and town budgets, it is instructed that the Newport Board of Selectmen, the Newport School District Board, the town manager, and the superintendent of schools immediately commence cooperative meetings to solve the issue of long-term storage and maintenance of school district vehicles, a major capital asset to the town and district, and create a work environment for the vehicle-responsible school district staff, which is equivalent to that of the other town staff.
Is there a second to this amendment?
Thank you.
Do you wish to speak to your amendment?
I would like to speak to my amendment. Thank you. All I want to say here is, I'm not, I vote for everything, but I'm not comfortable with obligating 99 years in the current facilities, because I'm not sure the current facilities are going to be the best ones for both the school and the town over the next 99 years. So I think instead what we need to do is give ourselves a year where the people who we elect and pay to plan for our town do just that. And then, next year, we can look at something that may last for a longer time. That's what I have to say.
Mr. North, you were going to speak on the motion. This is now an amendment you don't wish to, thank you. Mr. Fratzell?
Thank you, Sharon. A suggestion for both boards, if this one passes, take one of those bays, fix it up, insulate it, heat it, put a slab in it, allow them to do their maintenance in it, build a scraper outside for snowmull removal, and do what 90% of people do. You know, help these employees get the snow off. It's safe, it's easy, it's inexpensive, you don't need both bays. Town can pick up some more bays. They, for years, needed more space. Problem solved. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this amendment? Mr. Spaulding?
99 years. There's a high probability that not one of us will be here then. I might make it. My wife takes good care of me. But now, let's put it in perspective. It's been 42 years that that building has been there, 1980 to now. And I'm not even counting 23, I'm counting 22. So we're leaning for 43 already. That's getting pretty close to halfway. And we're not thinking, there's nothing here saying replace the building. So I would ask us to defeat the amendment, go back to the original, and get this done so we can go home.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the amendment? Yes. Come to the front, state your name and address.
Geraldine Black, North Newport. This building, this arrangement, 99 years, that building has been fine all of these years. I don't know where we're going to get this money from. Everybody wants new. Who doesn't? I'm all about repurposing. Look at the building, improve it, yes. Go look for a new building? Money, people. I've stood here and I've listened tonight to hear, there's all that money out there. It's all hanging out there. That's your money. I go to work every day. I never got home today. I came here, and I will hope that you consider, I get it, we want environments, good working environments for people, but people are struggling financially. People are going every day to work, they can't make ends meet. It's not a free-for-all, guys. It's your money. You need to pack, go back to the original article, that building has worked for 49 years. I believe in those people that set forth that contract knowing, they wouldn't have done that. They did things on a handshake, and they would not have said, "This is good enough." I'm all about children. I am a teacher as well. I'm all about bus drivers and all of that. I'm also all about, I'm a case manager, and people are struggling. We have food insecurity, people. We cannot add any more to their burden, to my burden. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the amendment? If not, I will call the question. A show of hands for those of you who wish to, all those who want to vote for the amendment, raise your card. Sorry for my... No, for Mrs. Urban's amendment. That's what we're voting on. Mrs. Urban made an amendment to the now amended article. The now amended article says that the school district will pay $1, period. Mrs. Urban's article takes that dollar out, asks that the school district pay what it voted in its budget without mentioning a dollar amount, and further directs the boards to cooperate and work on future planning. That's the amendment you're voting on now. Sure. If you vote yes, Mrs. Urban's article, Mrs. Urban's amendment becomes the main article. If you vote no, the one we just passed stays. Is the parliamentary situation clear? Okay. Point of order? You're voting yes? No. Well, no, I'm going to call for a no vote as well. Okay? I would ask that PJ and Robert Scott please, or whoever, just get ready to count in case. Point of order? Correct. 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 It's clear. You got it? No, I'm going to call for a yes vote and a no vote. We don't vote in absentia. You either vote yes, or you vote no. Parliamentary inquiry? Just a second. Go ahead. We have no idea if this will pass the DRA. Mrs. North? Is this a parliamentary inquiry? No. No. I will read you the amendment. No, it didn't. It did change, but it's not mentioned in here. Shall the town vote to lease a portion of the Public Works Garage Facility located on Route 10, consisting of the two easterly bays which are approximately 44 feet in length, together with adequate parking and access theretofu, and access to sanitary facilities in the Newport School District for the purpose of storing, maintaining, and repairing its vehicles and other equipment, and this is where the year changed, throughout fiscal year '24, at the annual rate voted in the fiscal year '24 school district budget? Furthermore, whereas the taxpayers of the town fund both the school district and town budgets, it is instructed that the Newport School, it is instructed that the Newport Board of Selectmen, Newport School District Board, town manager, and superintendent of schools immediately commence cooperative meetings to solve the issue of long-term storage and maintenance of school district vehicles, a major capital asset to the town and the district, and create a work environment for the vehicle-responsible school district staff, which is equivalent to that of the other town staff. That's what you are now voting on. One moment. Yes, point of order? I can't help that. Correct. Correct. I'm going to ask you yes, raise your card. I'm going to ask you no, raise your card. Yes, one moment. Okay? Point of order? Correct. Correct. All votes are taken in the affirmative first and the negative second. Point of order?
People taking years off my life. So what do we call it? Yes supports Mrs. Urban's motion, no supports the board. Yes is for Mrs. Urban, no is for the board. So you know what to do.
She said that.
No, I did not. I will explain it for the last time. If you support Mrs. Urban's amendment, you will vote yes. If you do not support Mrs. Urban's amendment, you will vote no. If the article passes, the amendment becomes, if the amendment passes, the amendment becomes the article. If the amendment fails, the amended article we just voted on becomes the article. All those in favor of Mrs. Urban's amendment, raise your cards. Keep them up so that the counters can count. All, put your cards down, please. All those who are not in favor of the amendment, vote no. Forty-six having voted in the affirmative and eighty-seven in the negative, the amendment fails. Unless there is any more discussion on Article 21, we will go back to Article 9. Article 9. What?
We don't, there is no reconsideration. I said that at the beginning of the meeting. There were, there is no reconsideration. I did, at the beginning of the meeting. Trust me. I, no, it does not under this form of meeting.
Mr. Spalding is questioning the rule of the moderator, which is that we do not reconsider at the deliberative session once the article has passed. That is the rule of the moderator and also statutorily. We will not reconsider any article after we have moved on to the next one, and we have moved on to Article 9.
I was almost here about two hours ago, but here I'm back. Now, we've got more business, Bert.
We have several more articles. I would ask for your respect for the rest of this meeting.
Thank you. I move Article 9 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,000 for the purchase of a new ambulance and related equipment. Said sum to consist of $60,000 to come from donations, $60,000 from general taxation, and balance to come from capital reserve, and to further authorize the withdrawal of $180,000 from the ambulance capital reserve fund for this purpose, recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Tax impact, eight cents.
Is there a second? Do you wish to discuss the article?
Yes, our ambulances are on a rotation to be replaced. They last approximately 12 years in that rotation. We put approximately $60,000, actually not approximately, we put $60,000 away every year towards that capital improvement. So that's where this money is coming from and where it's going.
Does anyone wish to discuss this article? If not, we will move, there is no moving of this question. We're moving on to Article 10.
Article 10. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $16,871 for the replacement of an HVAC unit at the Circuit Court Building. Said sum to consist of $10,000 from general taxation and $6,871 from capital reserve, and to further authorize the withdrawal of $6,871 from the District Court Capital Reserve Fund for this purpose. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen, tax impact, one cent.
Is there a second? Do you wish to speak to this article?
Yes, briefly, the District Court, or Circuit Court, is the old Bank East Building on Main Street. It's owned by the town and leased to the state of New Hampshire for use of a court. I can't recall how much we charge them for rent, but we make a profit on it. It goes into the capital reserve. Goes to the general fund to help offset taxes, and then there's generally a warrant article to transfer so much each year into the capital reserve fund for the maintenance of the District Court. This is basically a unit on the roof that needs to be replaced, and we're taking part of it out of that capital reserve fund and the other out of general tax, or on this warrant article.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this article? If not, we are moving on to Article 11.
I move on Article 11 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be transferred to the Communications Capital Reserve Fund. Tax impact, one cent.
Is there a second? Do you wish to speak to your article?
Very briefly. This is an article that we come up with every year in terms of setting money aside in capital reserve funds for very specific items to offset any future taxes. This money for the communication is for communication equipment such as radios and other aspects of the communication process used by the fire, police, and town.
Anyone wish to address this article? If not, we'll move on to Article 12.
I move Article 12 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be transferred to the Recreation Facilities Capital Reserve Fund. Tax impact, one cent.
Is there a second?
With this article, the same as the previous article, it's money being set aside in a capital reserve account to pay for recreation facilities, equipment, things of that nature, to offset any future tax process.
Does anyone wish to address this article? If not, we will move on to the next article, which I think is 13.
Move Article 13 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $189,400 to be transferred to the Richards Free Library to complete the funding for the library's roofing project. Balance of the project, $26,000 will be paid for by the library. Tax impact, 25 cents, recommended by the select board.
Do you wish to speak to your article?
I believe we have a library representative here that would probably know more about the history of this article.
Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Jeff?
Jeff Kessler, Laurel Street. I encourage people to support this article. I've always felt for the town of Newport, aside from throwing some asphalt on your street, the library and the rec department are the main places where people interact with the town. And the library, the building itself is a gem. Very important to the town, and it's, and even more important are the books and such that would be protected by fixing these roof leaks. So please support this article.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this article? Gentlemen in the back, please come to the front, state your name and address.
Matthew Salinardi, 20 Luxury Drive, Newport, New Hampshire. I agree, the library, the Richards Free Library is a gem. I was just looking, I read the packet that came in the mail about, that's the roof and then the, about half of the mortars remaining on the joints on the chimney and such, and some other things. And I just thought the price was kind of exorbitant that they, the contractor you provide quoted you. So I was just wondering if there's any way, I know I'm pretty late to the game here, but I was wondering if there was any way to go with a different contractor with a more reasonable price. But, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak, Mrs. Urban?
The letter that you refer to showed four of the 37 areas. And so that may be why it seemed exorbitant to you. We do have the bidder here, who could just maybe give us three or four points of how it is that the roof has so many areas. But the letter that was designed was only four of the 37 pictures.
Is the bidder a resident? That's fine, I will recognize him, I will recognize him as a non-resident.
John Green, GDC, Slaton Copper.
A little closer to your mic.
John Green, GDC Slaton Copper. We're the company that bid on the restorations to the library. The masonry was a smaller line item. One of the larger line items is the repairs to the single ply rubber membrane system, which is fairly out of date, those are extensive. The slate and copper are also fairly expensive to fix. The masonry was a smaller line item. But I'm happy to field any questions.
Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Thank you. If not, we will move on to Article 14.
Move Article 14 to see if the town will adopt the following modification to the elderly exemption. Shall we modify the elder exemption from the property tax in the town of Newport based on assessed value? For qualified taxpayers to be as follows. For a person 65 years of age up to 75 years, $54,000. For a person 75 years of age up to 80 years, $81,000. For persons 80 years of age and older, $108,000. To qualify, the persons must have resided in Newport, in New Hampshire for at least three consecutive years and owned the real estate individually or jointly, or if the real estate is owned by such person's spouse, they must have been married for at least five years. In addition, the taxpayer must have a net income of not more than $34,750, or if married, a combination of net income of not more than $44,100. And own net assets not in excess of $44,000, excluding the value of the person's residence, whether single or married. Additional requirements are set forth in New Hampshire RSA 72:39-A. These amounts will be effective April 1st, 2023. The intent of this modification is to increase the exemptions' amounts from the current $30,000, 65 to 75, $45,000, 70 to 80, and $60,000 over age 80 to $54,000, $81,000, and $108,000 respectively, based upon the recipient's property reevaluations and the maximum net income limit for single persons from the current $27,900 to $34,750, and for married couples from the current $35,400 to $44,100.
Is there, go ahead, do you wish to speak to your article?
Yes, if those numbers weren't confusing enough, obviously we're increasing the amount of the exemptions. We clearly stated there, but...
Does anyone wish to address this article? If not, we will go on to Article 15.
Article 15. To see if the town will modify the exemption for the disabled, set forth in RSA 72:37-B, to the amount of $27,000 from the assessed valuation of the principal residents of a qualified disabled person. A qualified disabled person is any person who is eligible under Title II or Title 16 of the Federal Social Security Act for benefits to the disabled and has been a resident of New Hampshire for at least five years, owns the real estate individually or jointly, or if the real estate is owned solely by such person's spouse, they must have been married for at least five consecutive years. In addition, the taxpayer must have a net income of not more than $34,750, or if married, a combined net income of not more than $44,100, and own, and own net assets not in excess of $44,000, excluding the value of the person's residence, whether single or married. Additional requirements are set forth in New Hampshire RSA 72:37-B. These amounts will be effective April 1st, 2023. Note, the intent of this modification is to increase the exemption amounts from the current $15,000 to $27,000 based upon the recent property reevaluation and the maximum net income limits for single persons from the current $26,000 to $34,750, and for married couples from the current $33,000 to $44,100.
Does anyone wish to speak to this article? If not, we will go on to Article 16.
I move Article 16 to see if the town will modify the exemption for the blind to set forth, as set forth in RSA 72:37, to the amount of $27,000 from the assessed value of the principal residents of a qualified person. This amount will be effective April 1st, 2023. The intent of this modification is to increase the exemption amounts from the current $15,000 to $27,000 based on the recent property reevaluation.
Is there, anyone, a second, thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this article? If not, we will go on to Article 17.
Move Article 17 to see if the town will vote to adopt, adopt, re-adopt, excuse me, adopted in 2007, the optional veterans' tax credit, RSA 72:28, Roman numeral 2, and the amount of $500, provided to veterans that qualify under the requirements of RSA 72:28, Roman numeral 4.
Do you wish to speak to your article? Is there anyone who wishes to address this article? Come state your name and where you live.
Andrew Booton, McDonough Road. I'm just curious why this article, this amount is not proportional like some of the other amounts we're talking about here for helping out elderly or disabled or whoever it might apply to. So, you know, it says that, it hasn't changed since 2007. I think taxes have changed since 2007. So I'm just curious, why is it that way? Thanks. Thanks.
Do you wish, does anyone on the board wish, Mr. Brown?
So this one didn't change proportionally. The only reason this is on the warrant this year is the legislature made a change last year, and the law was signed by the governor in June, I believe, saying that we had to re-adopt it. They didn't say why we had to re-adopt it. They didn't say that it was wrong. They just made all towns re-adopt what they had. As for the amount, this veterans credit could go as high as $700, but the towns never proposed that. I can't say why.
Does anyone else wish to address this article? If not, we will move on to Article 18.
Make a motion to move Article 18 to see if the town will vote to adopt the Newport Community Power Plan to authorize the Board of Selectmen to implement the plan and to take all action in furtherance thereof pursuant to RSA 53E. The Newport Community Power Plan is an opt-out program that offers more flexible electricity procurement. The plan will not, the plan will initially provide lower flexible electricity rates for residents, or it will not launch. Initial participation in the plan can be declined after which enrollment becomes voluntary.
Is there a second? Do you wish to speak to this article?
Yes, obviously, this is an opportunity, I wish more people were still here to hear this presentation about this plan. This is an opportunity for us to save some money. We've been spending plenty of your money already tonight. This is an opportunity for us to save a little bit. So I'd like to ask Hunter if he would come up and speak about this opportunity that would be doing.
Good evening. We'll keep this short and sweet. The town of Newport has, as our moniker suggests, has been the Sunshine Town, and we take that rather seriously. We have pursued all sorts of energy efficiencies over the years. We've converted all of our streetlights to LEDs. Saves approximately $70,000 a year. We've established and built two solar arrays which replace all the power that your municipal facilities use. Not the community as a whole, but the ones that all of our occupied buildings use. So we're sort of a net zero community. So this is the next step. We want to share this opportunity with the community. And this is a power aggregate program that provides us an opportunity to gather together and buy power on a greater scale because we'll be joining communities throughout the state. There are currently 30 communities enrolled in this program. There's another wave coming along with us. And the idea is to increase the number of people in our buying power so that we can buy power at a much lower price. Individual residences, once the program is launched, they'll have the opportunity, they will be sent an invitation, they will be automatically enrolled in the program, and at that moment, you can opt out. But you'll know what your rate is going to be at that moment. You can do this as an individual now, but it takes, having done it, it takes many hours to shop around and look for the best price and negotiate deals with various individual power companies. This organization that we will become a member of will do this for you, and you can opt out at any time. So it's a wonderful opportunity, I think, to save a little bit of money here and there. The savings will change from year to year. But we've had good experience with it. For instance, our power purchase agreements with our solar arrays have locked us in to electricity at a 2%... 2 cent increase per year. So everybody in this room is paying a whole lot more this year for electricity than 2 cents. But we're locked in for the next 25 years. So it's really turned out to be a great opportunity for us to suppress the increase in power that we can avoid. For instance, like our wastewater treatment plant. So I'd encourage you to give this some thought and vote in favor of it. And it could very well yield lower electrical costs for everybody in the community.
Mr. Beard?
I think I'm going to say something negative, but I'm not. My question is, in the past, there was this New Hampshire Power or something, and you could sign up for it, and it saved you money. But then Eversource, in their lovely ways, just said, okay, that's fine. That's the supply, because their bill's broken in half, and that was the supply rate. So they just jacked up the delivery rate. Is there any risk or like, and obviously if a bunch of towns have signed on, and I'm all for saving money on electricity because we're all, we're the second highest in the country, is there anything like, does this feel more legit maybe? Or like, this is going to be sustainable?
I would have to say I could only speculate on that. The phenomenon that you're referring to is very real. The power companies get their money from somewhere. So if everybody signs on to a discount rate, then they recalculate the rate. And so I would guess that over time, this will have to be reinvented. Because you always got to stay ahead of the curve. So I don't know how long it's going to be before we get to that point that you're describing. There are 30 communities on now. There's, from what I understand, another dozen or so lining up, us being one of them. So I think that in time, your concern may bear fruit. But for the time being, for instance, the 30 that have not, have signed on thus far are seeing a 20, about a 20, I think it's a 24% rate improvement at the moment. So what the future will hold, I'm not certain. But you can always opt out. Once we have, once we're in the members of the program, you can always opt out.
You want to respond to that?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Two things. First, a few years ago, we signed up individually through a program that got us a reduced rate than whatever Source was charging. And it was a case, you know, we got a bill, your bill's going up this amount. You know, three or four months ago, we looked at their website. Well, what they're offering new customers is less. We called, we negotiated a better price. What this program does, it's a community program. Everyone in the community signs up through the town, would get the same rate. It's cheaper than what, you know, I would say the retail rate is. Also, having this warrant article and having it pass is a requirement for taking part in the program. Another requirement for the program are two public hearings. We're going to be holding those. The first one will be Monday, the 10th, in the Selectmen's Meeting Room at 6:30 PM. And the second one will be two weeks later, the 24th, where a lot more information will be available. And hopefully, we'll have information available through the town website on this. I think if you look in the Valley News today or yesterday, I think it talks about Lebanon and their progress in the same program. Thank you.
The meetings are April 10th and April 24th. Mrs. Nelson?
Rebecca Nelson, McDonough Road. A couple of questions. Is this both businesses and residents?
I believe it's residential.
Residential. Now, we on the outskirts of town are on New Hampshire Electric COA. I'm not sure how that works. Is it just for Eversource customers?
I believe you will be billed for your power through your regular carrier at a negotiated reduced rate.
Through the COA as well?
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Spalding?
Can Ruger join us?
I believe that question was just answered.
So it was my question that I posed to the manager to inquire from this company because we have several businesses, not just Ruger, several high-power-use businesses that could really benefit from this program. It is my hope that they can benefit from it. But we have yet to hear back from them on that exact answer.
Follow-up?
Who administers this program locally?
The program is administered by the New Hampshire Power Cooperative, community organization. They have their own staff. The expenses that they incur are paid for through a surcharge or a slice of the savings between the energy provider before it comes to the consumer. So the consumer doesn't pay anything. Those expenses are covered prior to the rate being published for the consumer to take advantage of. And I can't tell you what that, the detail of that rate is. A representative from the organization will be attending both of the upcoming public hearings.
Does anyone else wish to, yes, Mr. North?
So my question on this, you know, I've also participated, paid in these plans. And I think this is, you know, certainly it's always worth saving money. But, so my question is here is just on the bottom sentence. It says, initial, sorry, initial participation in the plan can be declined after which enrollment becomes voluntary. Does that mean that, sort of like when you sign up for something and then they say, a month later, you know, you can drop out? Are the residents automatically signed up and you must decline? And if you don't decline, you're auto-enrolled? Or, I'm just not sure if there's enough clarification in the last sentence that I fully understand what it means.
Yes. So my understanding is when the program is approved and we join the program, you will get an individual mailing or a notice to each and every resident announcing that you are in the program. And at that moment, you can communicate with them and say, no, I don't want to be in the program, opt me out. And I understand thereafter, you can get back in. But I don't know the sequence of getting back in, and that will be clarified at the public meetings. And wait until this month.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address this article? If not, we will move on to Article 19. Is the petitioner here? This is a petitioned article. Is there someone from the town, Mr. Brown?
Mrs. Moderator, on behalf of the petitioners. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,370 for support of West Central Behavioral Health in fiscal year 2022, July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022. West Central provided $12,209, it's late, services to 199 Newport residents, including 89 children. By petition, tax impact, 1 penny, recommended by the Board of Selectmen.
Do you wish to, thank you, do you wish to speak to the article? Does anyone wish to address this article? If not, we will go on to Article 20, also a petitioned article. We did get a second.
Mrs. Moderator, on behalf of the petitioners. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for the purpose of supporting the federal match requirements for the Sullivan County Transportation Program operated by Southwest Community Services. By petition, tax impact, 1 penny, recommended by the Board of Selectmen.
Do you wish to speak to the article?
I do not.
Is there anyone who wishes to address this article? If not, we will go on to Article 22, since we have already done Article 21. To transact any other business which may come before this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you for hanging in there.